All right, let's start our board meeting for tonight, July 12th. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Ms. Ruttledge, you'll lead us in the pledge.
I would lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start our regular agenda, I think it's appropriate we take some time to acknowledge the loss of one of our students. And so I'd like to just spend some time in quiet reflection. I've asked Jeff to just say a few words before we start, so Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So certainly as a learning community, when you lose one of your students, obviously it is a loss that impacts the entire community. Eddie Merrick is an eight-year-old young man from Winfield, went to Sandberg Elementary School, also spent some time at Jefferson. Eddie had, for eight years, actually his entire life has battled some congenital heart defects and lung disease and certainly created some challenging circumstances for him. But in everything that I've read about Eddie and everything that I've heard from those around Eddie, he absolutely lived his life in a way that inspired others. And so certainly we are thinking, certainly thoughts, prayers to his family. I had an opportunity to attend the services a little earlier tonight, or the visitation tonight, and certainly know that while this is a really difficult time for the family, they greatly appreciate the thoughts, prayers, and support from the community.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Let's take just a moment for quiet reflection, please. Thank you. Board members, any modifications to the agenda?
I have just one that I'd recommend based on, I think, some questions, comments that we had. I'm recommending that the policy posting consent agenda be tabled, moved to topic for the next agenda. That'll, I think, allow us an opportunity to pull the new policy committee together and spend some time looking at some of the language that has been suggested.
Yeah, I do agree with that. Can we, can you identify for me in the agenda specifically?
Yeah, it's a policy posting consent, revised policy 2150, proposed policy 2180.
Okay, yep, got it. Great, thank you. Any other changes?
The only comment I had on that, first off, I agree in terms of the committees. I think we can, don't have to wait till we make committee assignments. We know what the committees are going to be generally, so I know we have some opportunity to get some work going, so.
It's a great, it's a great point, Brad. I do agree, just for everyone's information, and we'll formalize it as we get through the policy work, but we're going to have Mr. Paulson and Mr. Rutledge serve on our facilities committee, Mr. Long and Mr. Jerpy on our finance committee, Ms. Kolevitz and Ms. Blatt on our HR policy committee. So that work can start immediately. So once we go through these new agenda items, or those new policies that we just retabled, we'll ask the new committee to go through that work. So, thank you. Any public comments tonight? Okay. No public comments, I'm not going to do the statement, but I do want to talk about last, our last meeting. I did cut off one of our speakers, which in hindsight was premature, or in post-site, whatever you want to call it, was premature. Based on our series of communications, I thought she was going somewhere in our direction. I misinterpreted that and made the error of cutting her off. We should have let her finish. We do want to hear about policy. We want to hear about feedback from the community, so I really, I regret that having happened, right? And so we've had communication with her since, and we'll be continuing to have conversations as appropriate, and we'll just try to do better to make sure that doesn't happen again. So, you know, I would ask if you believe that we're heading down that path during a meeting, and I say something, give me the feedback immediately, right? So we can have a conversation. I think that'd be helpful, right? It's something that I want to continue to have as a goal, is to foster open communication. I want to make sure we do the right thing. While at the same time, you know, I do believe that if we have things that are being looked into, some privacy is important, but I think as a board, we could decide together. So I appreciate that feedback at the time of the event, if that happens again. And I hope it doesn't. I don't think it will, but I always want to have that help. So thank you for understanding, and thank you to our community for understanding and for the feedback. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So just, I guess, a little bit of levity to start the superintendent's report. Two things tonight that I have never done before at a board meeting. One, I've never shown up to a board meeting in a short-sleeve shirt. I've never shown up to a board meeting in a shirt representing only one of our two high schools. That's one thing I'm very careful about. If I'm wearing North gear, it's because I'm going to a North event. If I'm wearing Tiger gear, it's because I'm going to a Tiger event. But I have the proof to show that about half my cup of coffee from this morning is on my dress shirt that I was wearing to work that was not going to survive the day with about a half a cup of coffee on it. So this was the only emergency shirt that I had. So just for the record, it's not laziness, it was just carelessness with my coffee.
We need a motion to approve that. I thought you did it for me. It may not pass.
Yeah, it would be appreciated, yeah.
That's right.
I do have just a couple of updates, though, for the board under report this evening. Number one, as we get to your consent agenda, just want to make mention you're approving some very generous gifts from our PTA entities. We're in that window of time where we're seeing the summary of a lot of their gifts to schools incredibly generous. We're incredibly thankful for their support. We know that the support of not only our PTAs, but our booster organizations, our foundations, really provide critical support for the school district that greatly appreciates. So I just want to recognize them. Two, I do, said it jokingly, but I do want to recognize that Mr. Biskin is in his new role officially at this board meeting. Point of connection I do just want to mention in the transition from Dr. Kyle and kind of the end of his tenure to Mr. Biskin, when he started, we worked hard not to kind of lose sight of any, especially of the FOIA requests that came in, but I do know that there was one at least that kind of got missed in transition. We're on it, that will get filled. It, I think it's going to be a day late past the deadline, but certainly that's not intentional and not for a lack of transparency on the district's part, doing the best that we can to make sure that nothing got lost in transition. But we're on it now, and we'll make sure that that gets done. Third thing I just wanted to mention is that we have had, gosh, I think, for about the entire time that the district has had kind of a centralized resource, what was a textbook, kind of warehousing facility. We had the same person that worked at that facility. Cindy Ruder retired recently after really being our textbook manager for a long time. Melissa hired somebody new to step into that role that actually is going to work out of this building rather than down at Woodland, just to be a little closer to the Ed Services team, but she is incredibly busy as she started on the job, and all of the new ELA materials have come in that are being sorted and distributed to schools. So one, it's a welcome to textbook manager, but two, just recognition that all of those new ELA materials are here, they're getting delivered, so that teachers will have them in their hands whenever they want to have them in their hands, to make sure that they're prepared for start of the school year. So we appreciate that. Wanted to mention that under your personnel report, it's actually in the reassignment section of the personnel report, we have filled our last administrative position in the district with Mrs. Campos becoming the principal. At Warrenville South, that left an assistant principal opening Cynthia Budzikowski, who is the math department chair, has been the math department chair at South, is going to slide over into that role. So two new assistant principals at South, both coming from within the building and different instructional leaderships in the building, and Mr. Brennan and Mrs. Budzikowski, we're excited to have both of them into that role. And our administrative team is full and certainly is off and running. And then finally, under my report tonight, I'm going to actually hand it over to Brian O'Keefe. I just asked Brian to prepare for the board a very quick update on where we are in our facilities projects. We are biting off a bigger chunk of summer facilities work than we have, other than building a brand-new Jefferson, which we didn't do in the summer, but did in a short period of time. This is the biggest chunk of work that we've taken on, and I just wanted to have Dr. O'Keefe give you a quick update on where we are. So, and you do have a summary of this in your green folder as well.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. So good news across the board is everything is on track. We have about $9.9 million worth of work, which, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, is the largest amount of work that we've done in the summer, outside of building something new. We're going through a referendum, and we're touching more than a third of our schools with all this work. So a pretty broad, wide and broad overall perspective. In your green folder, there's just a one-pager that gives you some highlights of where things are at, I don't want to get too deep, and we don't have enough space for the million pictures that we've been sending to Erica and posting on many of our social media platforms, but just, this is just broken down by categories. So we start with roofing at the top and work our way down to playgrounds, and then what you see in there is just what the total cost is, including contingency that the board approved for those projects, specifically where all those projects. And then the most important part for all of us is substantial completion. That means 95% of the described work is done. Our substantial completion date for all of our projects is August 4th, and this just gives you a little bit of background of what's happening in each of those areas. There's a few things, as you see, like our paving and all of our concrete work at North and South is done. That's just a punch list at this point. Flooring, both at Sandberg and Longfellow, Hawthorne, the NPR is already done, is expected to be done by the end of next week. So there's quite a few projects that are moving quickly, but everything else we anticipate being finished in time, as based on the bid, the bid documents, our contracts with our vendors substantially completed as of August 4th.
I did want to at least mention or just ask for a quick kind of gauge of interest. Dr. O'Keefe and I were talking a little bit earlier today about, as we get a little closer to that substantial completion date, we thought maybe some board members would be interested in a couple of tours, especially of the new library learning center projects. I think Lowell would be an interesting tour, just because that, there's not much of that building that didn't get touched, some of it you can't see because it's up in ceilings, but it's covered by brand-new ceiling and lights and other pieces. So would that be of interest if we look for a date, maybe in early, early August? We were hoping maybe we'd have our new activity vans that we could take you, and the new vans are delayed just a little bit, so we won't have the new activity vans, but we can take you on a tour nonetheless. Okay, we'll work on a date then.
Jeff, how does that work with the Open Meetings Act? Will we accommodate a couple of us?
No, we can, as long as we're on a facility tour, we can, we can attend a facility tour. You are okay. Cannot talk about any other business of the district outside of the, just taking you on a tour, but we can do that.
All right, thank you. Our next topic is the consent agenda. Bear with me as I read the items on the consent agenda. There's 14. Acceptance of gifts from Hawthorne Elementary School PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Madison Elementary School PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Pleasant Hill Elementary School PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Weasbrooke Elementary School PTA. Acceptance of gifts from Franklin Middle School PTA. Acceptance of gifts to Monroe Middle School PTA. Or is that a bit, it didn't say PTA, so it's just acceptance of gifts to Monroe Middle School. Approval of policy elementary middle and high school student handbook updates for 2023, 2024. Approval of math instructional supplies bid. Approval of foreign travel liability insurance with CLIC. Acceptance and approval of the 10-year life safety survey, Johnson Elementary School. Approval of the IASB 2023-2024 annual dues. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, June 14, 2023, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to February 2020, 2022, as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, are any of these items that you members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, Dr. Schuler, do you have any information?
No additional information.
Board, any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. On number seven, the high school handbooks, or I'm sorry, all the school handbooks, there's a revised, what was revised?
What was revised in the handbook?
No, it's showing that.
Oh, it was updated. There were a couple of names that had to get updated. Mr. Biskin just changed over. There were minor edits, just catching up to some names that had to be replaced.
Any other questions?
Just my comment on that. First off, are we required to post the handbooks, or is this just kind of our practice?
We have always posted them as policy. So there, we viewed those handbooks, student handbooks, as a part of your policy, so we've treated them the same way we do posting and approval of board policy.
The only thing I would request is before we post it, if we can make the changes on the separate sheet, put those into the document. Some of the changes, I think there was three line items in that worksheet that I couldn't locate. So if we could get those changes in the handbooks for the public review, that would be, I think, would be better than reviewing something that's not accurate.
What do you mean by not accurate? I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the changes were made in the documents that are attached to the agenda. There was a separate document that had the changes, but the changes weren't in the actual handbooks. Sorry.
Exactly. So if we post the handbooks, it's not going to be reflective of the other sheet that lists all the changes.
Correct. Sorry.
So what I'm saying is, can we incorporate those proposed changes into the handbooks?
Sure, we'll do our.
And then post them.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
I guess moreover, for ease of review, much as when we have policy amendments, we kind of highlight what's changed, it would be nice if the posted versions could include that, just for easy viewing by the public.
Sure. Yeah. We will work on that. It's not going to be as easy inside of the handbooks, because that's a policy service that's doing that for you with the press policies, the handbook, that's a little bit more on it, but we'll work on it.
Just to clarify, so when we say they're posted, is that that's online, correct? And here in a hard copy? Or no?
Well, what's, what's, what's posted would be the changes that are being. So what I, I guess what I tried to do very, very clearly in working with Mr. Biskin in that chart was identify exactly where that piece of language is in the handbook that's being changed, and what the change was that's being made. I just put the handbooks in there for reference, so that obviously you could put that in context.
That document was available, I think that's helpful.
I think I understand. I don't, we don't need to labor the point, I get the request.
Any other questions? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So motioned.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jerpy, second by Mr. Rutledge, Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Our next action is the policy approval consent agenda. The following 11 policy numbers are listed for approval. Revised policy 2.110. Revised policy 4.60. Revised policy 5.125. Revised policy 5.150. Revised policy 5.260. Revised policy 5.30. Revised policy 5.90. Revised policy 6.135. Revised policy 6.210. Revised policy 6.230. And revised policy 8.20. Board, are there any items that board members want removed from the policy approval consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any information?
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to mention in here. In your green folders, we included a document from ISBE. The date on that document is June 12, 2023. It's a, it's a resource guide that ISBE was required to develop by July 1st in conjunction with the changes that were made to policy 530. That's your policy that talks about hiring criteria. The change that's actually inside of that policy is a small paragraph in the policy, but actually reflects a pretty substantial process. It sits on top of HR departments in all school districts now in doing what's called an employee history review for any situation that involves somebody that brings a background, right, to districts. So just two things. One, I wanted to share a copy of that report. I think Angela had asked about it, and so we included it in the green folders. Two, I thought it might be good at your August meeting for us to do just a short oral report on this topic, so that the board understands kind of difference between Aaron's Law that applies to some required programmings and lessons that we do for kids, Faith Law, which has more of a responsibility that sits on top of HR, right, and hiring processes. But there's a lot that sits behind all of that, both in terms of processes in the HR department, required trainings and opportunities that we did, and I think just given some conversation that has been taking place in the community, I think that might be a productive oral report. So I just wanted to point that out, mention if the board is amenable to it, we would bring that to your August meeting. It would be a report that Dr. Sloggy and Mr. Biskin would do together, since it kind of crosses their, their two departments, in student services and HR.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Board, any questions or comments?
Is there any public comment received on any of these?
No.
Related to what you mentioned, just because I know it's been of a high degree of community interest, I know that 515, 530, and 590 in particular have amendments that were directly or indirectly related to Faith's Law. Are we expecting the press is going to have further updates, or was this somewhat of a one-and-done to incorporate it?
I don't think you're going to see press with any further updates. Again, there, there are some much more kind of significant detailed administrative protocols and procedures that sit, sit behind them, so I guess that's part, part of why I've, you know, suggested, like if we were to try to share or articulate to the public all of our administrative procedures, we'd spend days, right, going through them. But that's one where I think, just given the recent conversation, it probably would be helpful to illustrate that sometimes what might appear to be just a couple of short sentences in policy has a very detailed kind of implementation protocol that goes along with it. So we have that, that's something that Mrs. Coons in our HR department has been working on for several months in anticipation of that bill obviously passing and getting signed into law, because it's a, it's some pretty extensive protocols that it adds, both in terms of individuals we hire and individuals that might be leaving District 200 to go other places.
Board, any additional comments or questions? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. We have three action items to add to the agenda, so the first action item is approval to post the tentative budget and set the hearing, the public hearing, on the fiscal year 2024 budget. Dr. Schuler, would you like to introduce the topic and additional information?
Hand it over to Dr. O'Keefe. I guess it just, just high 20,000-foot level, want to share, remind the board and certainly community, there are three big levers that happen over the summer in the school district. Obviously, one is the development of the tentative budget that goes into play July 1 with our new fiscal year. Two is obviously all of the capital facilities work. You heard a little bit of an update on that. And three is that typically the summer is when the board looks at work plan priorities and goals for the upcoming year, and we're going to be talking about that in a little bit. So we're kind of dabbling into all of them, but I guess I would say kind of the main show for tonight is the tentative budget that Dr. O'Keefe has been working with his team to develop, and I'm going to pass it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Hopefully it's a good show and not a carnival. Little different. So as Dr. Schuler mentioned, one of the main focuses for the business office, certainly we start back in January with this, and this year was a little bit different, but when you look at the overall budget calendar, we ask you for approval in January to begin working on the next fiscal year's budget, and in between that time and this evening, this year was a little different. We certainly were in negotiations and, and started the budget later than typical, because of when we brought a settlement, tentative agreement to the board for approval of that agreement with the WWEA back in April. And then again, we are working on an update with the CEA, which we brought to you last month. So still made our timelines as necessary. It's one of the simplest things that you can do not to work in public education in my job, is you don't, you don't bring the tentative budget to the board in the timeframe that it's supposed to. So the work is done, these are good numbers. Certainly things will change. I'm going to talk about some of the highlights related to the budget, but there's, there's three things, three specific things that happen between now and when you approve the final budget in September. One, tonight, we ask you for approval to post the budget. What that means is, in the Daily Herald tomorrow, there will actually be a legal notification indicating that the budget is available for the public to view. There will be copies here physically at the SSC, and then we post that also on our new website. Secondly, we actually have to have, based on school code, a public hearing. That public hearing cannot occur until 30 days after the tentative budget has been posted, so that will occur at our August, at our August board meeting. There is not an update to the budget at that point. It is merely opening a public hearing. If there's public comments, we hear the public comments, and then the hearing is closed. No other work done with the budget that evening. And then the final budget that we bring to you, I'll highlight any significant or statistically significant changes that occur in September. And your job as a board of education under statute is to approve the budget no later than September 30th of every year. Just a little bit of a, kind of not timeline lesson for us, talked about the budget posting. One thing that I wanted to mention, especially with a few new board members and potentially some of the public not necessarily understanding how a public school, a school district budget works, there are actually two ways to build a budget and two ways to look at our audit, specifically on a cash basis side of things or on an accrual side of things. So from the accounting side, we specifically operate day in, day out on a cash basis. And that simply means when the money comes in, we record it; when the money goes out, we record it. You see in your monthly reports, and then all of the backup associated with those monthly reports that come from Mr. Thorres, our treasurer, where your spend is, so where the revenues are this year, your spend is this year, and then your overall fund balances within each of our seven different funds that we have. That's all operating on a cash basis. You actually have that in your board packet tonight under monthly reports. Then from the auditing side of things, the audit's done on an accrual basis. And what that means is, what should have happened in that given year is actually accounted for in that given year. And we take many different levers to make sure the information is accurate. A couple examples of that are our tax levy. So we actually collected, as of June 30th, 52.762% of our 2022 tax levy. That's why, it's part of the reason why your fund balances are a bit swelled when you look at the monthly report for June, because we actually collected $4.9 million more than technically what we are going to show as being collected on our actual, on our AFR and then the accompanying financial statements. That revenue, while it's shown as cash on the monthly reports, will be shown as like a delayed revenue or deferred revenue on, on the report. So that, that, part of the reason why, and you'll see as we get into a few slides here, we're very careful when talking about audited numbers versus cash numbers, because our cash numbers are not the numbers that end up on your financial statements. So two very important points, when we're looking at data on a month-to-month basis, the cash basis works perfectly fine, but as we get to our year-end and we start talking about the things that potentially are happening in July and August that were tied to the previous fiscal year, both revenue and expenditure, all of that stuff gets pulled back, which is why your audit will never, ever match any one of your monthly statements. Two different accounting methods used for it. Just one, it's in your board booklet. So you actually have three different things inside your board packet. So you've got the presentation, you've got the booklet, your tentative budget booklet, and then, as I'll highlight here in just a few minutes, we asked Dr. Ozemkowski to and then as I'll highlight here in just a few minutes, we asked Dr. Ozmkowski to get together with Matt and myself and talk about where we're at from staffing, anticipated staffing perspective. So I'll bring that up here shortly. But when we talk about funds that we use, there are two more funds in the Illinois Program Accounting Manual that we don't use. That's Fund 80, which is tort and Fund 90, which is fire and safety prevention. But these are your standard seven funds. Funds 10 is education, it's your largest. Fund 70, if you move all the way down, working cash fund, think of that as your piggy bank. What you have in front of you here, so these slides, so slides six through nine is data, audited data that comes from Forecast Five. Forecast Five is an outside software company that we subscribe to, that we put all of our AFR data into, we put all of our budget data into, and then we pull your five-year forecasts out of Forecast Five. They've got different comparative analytic models that we use for all the data, but we are presenting here in a five-year look back, not including fiscal '23, because that audit has just begun. But just a bit of a highlight of where operational revenues have been over the past five years. And again, operational dollars are Fund 10, Fund 20, so that's O and M, Fund 40, which is transportation, and then Fund 70, which is working cash. Same thing on the expense side, just breaks it down by object. And again, objects are major categories that expenditures fall into. Examples of that are salaries, which is a 100, benefits are 200, purchase services are 300, supplies are 400, on and on. One interesting note here, and this is one of the models that actually comes out of Forecast Five, so this is just, it's an alphabetical comparison of our surrounding districts. So they're specifically Barrington in there, Batavia, ourselves, we've got Indian Prairie, Naperville 203, St. Charles 303, and then Elmhurst. So your operating expense per pupil specifically for fiscal year '22 was $16,878.81, so almost directly aligned with Batavia, and certainly a little bit higher than Indian Prairie, a little bit lower than the three other main pillars, if you pull Barrington out of it, which are Elmhurst, Naperville 203, and St. Charles. If you actually back out the top outlier, Barrington, the average for all of those is 17,220. If we pull out the high and the low, so that's Indian Prairie and Barrington, the average is actually 17,716 between all of those. What does that mean? It means the amount of expenditures on an operating side of things that we spent per pupil on average throughout this district in fiscal year '22. Does not include debt service, does not include many other major areas, but it's what we spent on our pupils. The larger dollar or smaller dollar doesn't necessarily mean a good or a bad thing. I think we do a terrific job of controlling costs and focusing all of our efforts and dollars on the educational experience for our kids. So the value of where we're at in terms of an operating expenditure per pupil compared with specifically the outcomes that we have inside the school district, which are excellent, leads me to believe, as your chief school business official, that there's value associated with what we're doing, and we're doing a very good job of controlling the cost related to those overall values. Last slide, even though the far right column, which again, this comes out of Forecast Five, and that column's always a little bit off every year for some unknown reason, but this is your fund balance history. And again, fund balance is operational revenues compared to operational, the total, sorry, operational fund balance compared to the total operational revenues. So as of fiscal year '22, you're at 32.2%. I'm not going to guess where we're going to be at, but we should be somewhere within that range for fiscal year '23. Okay. The fun stuff. Lots of meats and potatoes in here, so I'm going to share a lot of data with you. Certainly, there's some high-level data here, some drill-down data at the same time as we get into the expenditure side. If I put all of this on there, I don't think the presentation would look all that great, so I've got some information to share with you here. So revenues, revenues as a whole, and our biggest lever on the revenue side is the tax levy. Specifically, our tax levy, our levy from 2022 was a 5% increase on the operating side. One of the interesting parts about budgets in public education is there are a lot of anomalies and different factors that fit into it that all do not align from the same timeframe. Our fiscal year budget is July 1 through June 30. The state's fiscal year budget is July 1 through June 30. TRS is July 1 through June 30. IMRF is calendar year. The federal budget is 10, 1 through 9, 30. So while we get a ton of information over the summer to help prepare for our budget, there are some things, and certainly when it comes to federal grants, where we may not have those exact dollars because it hasn't been decided at a federal level what the output for IDEA or any of the title grants are. We do get preliminaries upfront. We have those preliminary numbers now. Hopefully, we'll have those final numbers for the final budget. But between that, and then when you think about tax levies, every budget has two different tax levies in it. So fiscal year '24 budget has the second half of the '22 tax levy, and it'll have the first half of the '23 tax levy. Lots of moving parts. So from a CPI perspective, 5% built in to the first half of the tax levy for '22. If you recall, for those of you that were with us back in January, we looked at projections and had 5% for CPI built into the '23 tax levy. We've used that same projection and built that into the budgeting model for this upcoming fiscal year. Our distribution, so outside tax distributions, for those around last year, if you recall, Wheaton Tiff Number 2 specifically was coming off the books, and that was new incremental dollars coming into the district, not new taxes, just taxes flowing in a different mechanism. We don't have that large mechanism moving forward this year, so we estimate what new construction is going to be, and that doesn't impact existing homeowners. That's just any homeowners where that new construction has occurred. Right now, we have a $30 million estimate. In about six weeks, I should have a pretty good number from our different township assessors on where they believe that actual estimate is going to be, and then we'll use those dollars in the final budget. CPPRT, which is a confusing notion for those of us in the industry and then for those that are novices. So back in the 70s, local governments used to be able to tax businesses for personal property. So things that were physically inside the businesses, we were able to tax them for. That stopped in 1979. The CPPRT is in essence a replacement tax on that, but it's driven by net income. So corporations that have positive net income, Illinois net income in this state pay 2.5% of that net income. S. corporations, trusts, or partnerships pay 1.5% of their net income. And then the Illinois utilities, specifically on what is defined as invested capital, pay a 0.8% CPPRT tax. We do not calculate any of that money at the local level. All of that is done through the Illinois Department of Revenue. They give us an estimate typically in early September, and I can tell you that the estimate has never once been right, either up or down. So the estimate for last year was $6.2 million. We received seven. Don't have estimates yet. We're using the $7 million as our baseline from last year. Thankfully, when our first check came in this week, it was $5,000 more than what we received last July. So at least the beginning of the process, it looks like we're on target. But the challenge for the Department of Revenue and all local municipalities and governing bodies is, we don't know what corporation net income is going to be for all these institutions throughout the state of Illinois. So it can be somewhat of a challenging guessing game.
Do we use their estimate in our budget?
We do. Yep. So if the estimate is different, unless I find a reason why I'm not going to use their estimate, yes, then we'll use their estimate going forward. Interest earnings, interest has been an interesting topic over the last 12 months. So average interest earnings last July was 1.6%. Average interest earnings this July, as of this point right now, is almost 5.3% through just the money market account that we have a lot of our money in over at Wheaton Bank and Trust. So a significant difference. The first half of the year, each month moved about 50 basis points. Second half of the fiscal year, each month moved somewhere between 10 and 20 basis points to get us to the 5.2. We are still hearing from the market that there could be one or two more increases by the feds in their overnight rate, which would tick up maybe just a little bit what that interest income potential is. But we also don't know exactly where CPI is going to be and whether or not, like today's announcement, so CPI was announced today as of June at a 3% increase year-over-year. It's the lowest increase year-over-year since March of '21, so pretty significant a time, more than two years plus. Typically, the second half of the year, CPI has tended to go on a downturn, so we could be moving maybe towards a 1% or 2% CPI. We'll see what the market, what happens in terms of overall spend in the marketplace and whether or not the feds do continue to curtail, try to curtail purchasing and reduce some of that inflationary risk that's outside of the marketplace. We've got in terms of our estimation, if we run between a 4% and a 5% monthly average earnings, that fits into what we've put into the tentative budget, which is $1.3 million for next year. State funding, two major categories of state funding. Evidence-based funding model, that's the old general state aid. That specifically gets used in this district in multiple funds, as you can see. The Ed Fund, O and M Fund, our debt service fund. And again, we pull money out of the evidence-based funding model to pay for the lease certificates for Jefferson. That's a pledge that the board made back when those certificates were issued, and then we put some money in transportation, too. I have estimated at this point that EBF would increase by $200,000 for us. We do not get that data until the middle of August, and that estimation is based on two years of history. We picked up about $300,000 in new money two fiscal years ago. We picked up about $250,000 in new money last fiscal year, and the closer that we get to 100% fully funded, we're at 95, a little bit north of 95% right now, the smaller those dollar amounts become. We're still in Tier 3, but if we move to 100% fully funded in terms of the evidence-based funding model, we move into Tier 4, which means we get literally pennies on the dollar moving forward after that in terms of new money. That then, as soon as we have that data, that exact number will be finalized in the final budget. The other big piece on the state side is mandated, what's referred to as MCATs or mandated categoricals. So we get reimbursement for really two major areas. Everything else has been tucked into the evidence-based funding model. Special ed, private facility tuition. So all of the services that we provide to students, based on what's defined in their IEP, where those services are being served off of our campus in private facilities, we get some reimbursement from that from the state. The challenge with that is that data isn't due until, to ISBE, until November 1st. So we're already done and over with the budget before we even know what's coming back from the state in terms of those dollars. And then second, transportation, the big one, transportation, both regular ed, driver's ed. That first submission is due to ISBE on August 15th, but then there is about a week window in the middle of November that they allow for corrections. So same thing, if we make corrections in November because something, we found that something that we submitted was not accurate, either we missed something or we overstated something, that affects what the reimbursement is, and the budget's already done. So typically, these two areas never match dollar-for-dollar what we're expecting in the budget. We use the prior year's history and then any anomalies that we expect to happen because maybe we transported more, maybe we had more routes last year, year-over-year. We had about the same number of routes between '22, '23, and '21, '22, and roughly the same amount of students in special ed placements over those two years, too. So that's why we use last year's guide for the budget so far. There are a few other big pieces that are under the federal side of things. So we operate underneath the National School Launch Program. That means we have students that either qualify for free, qualify for reduced, or are fully paid. We receive a reimbursement from the federal government for each of those different areas. The reimbursement for the upcoming year, we're still waiting for ISBE to confirm it. There was a federal registry update last Friday from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. That reimbursement looks like it's going to be $4.27 a meal. We are paying $4.11 a meal. We cannot operate a profitable program, so any so-called profit in that program, we reinvest back into programs with equipment updates and other things like that on an annual basis. Our title programs, so 1, 2, 3, and 4, between title and IDEA, there's been some pretty significant reductions in what we're being told we're going to have as allocations for next year. So like I mentioned before, this is the federal government side of things. We have preliminary allocations. Those allocations in both IDEA and all of our titles are $1 million less than what was allocated to us last year, which certainly has caused Melissa and all of her team some pain on how to fit certainly new salaries or updated salaries into those grants to make sure that we have a clear delineation between what we're going to use the federal dollars for and what we're going to use local dollars for. Medicaid, any student that is low income that receives services from the district, low income and qualifies for Medicaid, we get a form of reimbursement for those services that are provided. So think of your OTs, your PTs, speech PaaS, areas where we are providing specifically delineated services that have been defined in their individual education plan, and we get a portion of those costs back. That goes through a third-party outside source, and really, it's unknown the timing of when all of those dollars come through. Those are federal dollars that actually flow through the state of Illinois, and if you can believe this, we physically get hard checks from the state of Illinois for this reimbursement. It's no wire and no nothing like that. So when they show up and what exactly they are, the data comes with it, but we don't know in advance until we actually receive it. So we use last year as the guide on what we budget for this year. And then as we've all heard throughout many different areas, our ESAR grants are coming to a fold, so we have about $84,000 left in ESAR 2 that will be spent this year, $2.9 million in ESAR 3 that will be spent this year. And then we actually, thank you, Jason. Jason found a new ESAR digital equity grant. It's $552,000. Jason is using that specifically to purchase all new Chromebooks for our freshmen, both at North and South, who would have been on a replacement, three-year replacement, or would have been in a three-year replacement window next year. So instead of having to buy brand-new or lease brand-new Chromebooks for all of our kids at both high schools in '24, '25, we'll only have to worry about three of the four different grades, and we're using that grant, and we'll spend that grant this year. So good significant, thank you, Jason.
Equipment is not leased?
We actually lease and buy, but you are buying specifically with this. We lease everything in general, so staff and student, but this, you are within a grant, you are not allowed to lease beyond the grant year and use those dollars for beyond the grant year, so it just makes more sense to purchase in this case. On the expenditure side, so a lot of knowns on the expenditure side. Teacher contract, 6% increase. On the classified staff, every classified staff member received at least a dollar increase per hour. Non-union and administrative teams, there was a range of 2.5% to 5%. As you recall from Dr. Schuler sharing that information with the group, and that was certainly depending on where those positions fit from a competitive perspective, looking at our comparables. Benefits, not a very good renewal for the upcoming benefits, so our PPO specifically is going to be a 14.5% increase this coming September 1st. HMO is 8.7, dental's 4.8. We are part of a pool, it's called the Northern Illinois Health Insurance Program, NIHIP, another education acronym. That pool trend for this year is not moving in a positive direction either. Our utilization so far through the month of June is actually higher than it was in the month of June last year. So there may have to be some pretty significant discussions that we have, both at the pool level and here at the local level about, if we're looking at significant increases again, do we need to make some adjustments to our plans to help offset what those increases are? TRS on the federal side, so if you use federal dollars on staffing, specifically, there's a different TRS percentage that's used. It's not much higher. It's 9% for standard employees, it's 10.6%. That number gets updated by TRS every year. And then we are an IMRF employer. IMRF employees are in a pension system, just like a TRS pension system. That system is not controlled and does not have oversight by any agency at the state of Illinois. It's a standalone agency that has its own board. As an IMRF employer, our employees are responsible for contributing into that pension plan. They pay 4.5%. We also, as an employer, as a district, invest in that pension plan for them, too, because that pension plan is based on the calendar year. We've always got two different numbers inside of each fiscal year, and the number for next calendar year is preliminary at this point. We don't get that final number till November after the budget is already done. But as you can see up there, we've actually had a good trend. We went from over, almost 9% in calendar year '22 to just about 6.75% in calendar year '23, and then they're projecting even another 25 basis point or so drop in calendar year So other major expenditures, so curriculum, obviously, all the curriculum updates that are going through Melissa and her teams. I talked about technology, so updating just our I talked about technology, so updating just our one-to-ones where necessary. Our outsourced contracts, so really three major areas for outsourced contracts. Food service, that's organic life. You all approved that contract for next year. This will be the fifth year that we are in a relationship with organic life. We will be required to either go out to bid or to go through an RFP process next year. We are probably going to start that much sooner than later, especially if we're doing an RFP process. That would be something I would expect to have a discussion at the board level here very soon, so you can give us guidance on what direction you would like to go. Technically, there's not an increase in food service for next year, because for those of you that are around, if you recall, about halfway through the year, there was additional funds that flowed, that came from the federal government. It's 32 cents for breakfast and 68 cents for lunch that got added on top of what we were paying, because it was just a flow-through. It's nothing that we could keep. Technically, we could use it to pay for food services, so that actually pumped our rates higher than what our rates are to start for the upcoming year. So technically, it's a reduction, but in essence, it's just a new rate based on year five. We would certainly anticipate with the last year, organic life, they have landed Naperville 203 as a new client this year, they have landed District 87 as a new client this year. But I would expect them to have a terrific year in terms of the program, because they certainly want to put their best foot forward before we consider, before you consider your next move as it relates to either a bid or an RFP, and hopefully that means more participation from our students. The custodial side, we're moving into year three of a five-year agreement. The costs are specifically known. It's a roughly 6% increase, which also, so that includes really two major factors from their perspective, changes in anticipated costs for supplies, and then certainly changes in personnel costs, salary costs. And lastly, transportation. We are moving into a second year of a two-year agreement with both Illinois Central. So they do our regular education and our in-district special education busing. That increase is 3.5% for this year. Sunrise, same thing, moving into a second year of a contract, their increase is 8% for this year. And then Citizens Taxi, which you wouldn't think we do a lot of business with a taxi company. We do a ton of business with a taxi company for homeless and special ed and lots of other different reasons. That increase is just a 10 cent per mile increase, which equates to 3.23%. So minimal in terms of when we look at overall costs there. On the O and M utility side, so Colin and Kevin get data from the pool that we're in for both electricity and natural gas, so they use that data to estimate what our costs are going to be for next year. Sanitation, we just roll over year over year. We talk to the Wheaton Sanitation District to see if anything significant is going to change for next year. There's not. And then phone and water. Water's typically just a year-over-year rollover. We check with the cities to make sure there's no major bumps being planned for next year. And phone is just our standard phone cost overall year over year, which is pretty much a rollover. Then there's three other areas that fall on the major topics. So tuition, I'll play students that I talked about already, those students that we are sending to private facilities. Our student activity accounts, those are just flow-throughs from a district perspective. The major ones that we have are at both high schools. We have treasurers at both high schools. Those treasurers report to the building principals with a dotted line to the business office. We audit all of our specific student activity accounts, regardless of what level, every quarter, to make sure that they're on track. That data actually gets put into your AFR, what those final numbers are. And then last but not least, I mentioned the lease payments over at Jefferson. We did talk about this, so this is nothing new to you, as we've kind of highlighted what's happening this summer already, but one thing that I do want to bring up, and this is the point that I wanted to bring it up. So we have been under recommendation from our audit firm, Baker Tilly, that all of our capital projects be paid out of the capital project fund. If you recall from our fiscal '22 audit, we had some federal dollars from ESER that we showed as revenue in Fund 20. The auditors told us it should have been in Fund 60, and we got our hands slapped, and that was the quote-unquote "material weakness" in the single audit. We had revenue from that stream again this year to help offset some of our costs. The revenue did not go in Fund 20, the revenue is in Fund 60 to make sure that we skirt that. But what that specifically has done means we don't need to transfer as much revenue over, or transfer as much fund balance, if you will, over from Fund 20 to Fund 60, because there's an additional $2 million that in the original budget we weren't anticipating having in Fund 60. But secondarily, after talking with Nick Cavalier, who's the partner in charge of our account at Baker Tilly, as we've heard, between, A, receiving a $100,000 grant from the state for the LLC work at Johnson, and then using all of our developer donations or impact fees to pay for those projects, those dollars right now sit already in your fund balance in O and M. It's $1.607 million. Sit there already. I originally had built a budget to transfer those costs out and increase the transfer over to Fund 60. When I had a conversation with Nick a few weeks ago, he said, "I actually think it would be easier, and from an auditor's perspective, I would approve and agree with if you wanted to spend the costs related to the LLCs out of Fund 20, even though we've told you to spend it out of Fund 60 in the past, that's perfectly fine, because you have that sitting in your fund balance there already." Now, that doesn't mean that we have to, we have to do what he tells us to do. He's just saying we could do that. If you would prefer for us to do everything out of Fund 60, then we will make the changes going forward for that. Otherwise, you're going to see a deficit in Fund 20 of exactly $1.607 million, which is your available developer donation impact fee balance as of June 30th, so that we can pay the LLC projects out of Fund 20. Then we just get into some overall highlights about, and graphs about where things are at. So education revenues, tentative budget, north of 175 million. You see the breakdown between the major areas of where those revenues are coming from. So 77% of the revenues coming in to the Ed Fund are derived from property taxes. You see a few other areas around there. Other state revenue, think of like driver's ed reimbursement, some other areas like that are other states, other local revenues, interest earnings, registration fees, school fees, things of that nature. The education fund on the expenditure side, education fund is our biggest fund, as you'll see. So just a little bit less than 175 and a half million on the expenditure side. 84% of that budget is directed to salaries and benefits. Sorry, there's an awkward pause, because it's not moving. There we go. Now it moves too fast. So O and M on the revenue side, as soon as it gets back to where it's supposed to go. So all revenues and traditionally, the vast majority, super vast majority of revenues are property taxes, a little bit of local when you consider interest earnings. We do put a little bit of EBF in there, but 96% of revenues are specific from property taxes. On the expenditure side, the expenditure side looks a little bit different, because from an ISB state budget perspective, transferring money out of one fund into another is not considered a revenue or an expenditure. It's a transfer, which is why it's below the revenue and expenditure line on the state budget. So technically, your actual expenditures are significantly less than there, but then we have to factor into what we're transferring out to go to the capital projects. So that allocation looks a little bit different, about 45% on the purchase service side, about 20% salaries and benefits, and then the other big number there is supplies and materials and that capital outlay. That capital outlay is a bigger number than normal, because we're paying for the LLCs out of Fund 20. If we end up deciding to do that, not to do that and move it over to Fund 60, that would shrink that number in essence down to zero. Debt service, the only thing you can do in debt service is pay debt service. So it's our non-referendum bonds, our referendum bonds, and then the lease payment. All that revenue is driven, and it's timely, it's driven off of multiple tax levies, and there are, and there are different dollar amounts associated with your debt and those debt payments within each of those multiple tax levies. So 94% of the revenue for debt services is from property taxes. It's a other object 100%, because we're paying it to financial institutions. So no breakdowns of the expenditure side of things in debt services. Transportation, revenue, simple majority coming out of property taxes, but the second big chunk there is pupil transportation reimbursements from the state of Illinois from the prior year, which is why that number is higher. And then we do put a little bit of evidence-based funding in there, too, to help to get to as close of a balanced budget with transportation as we can. We have a pretty healthy fund balance there, so a little bit of a deficit there with an overall surplus on the operating side is AOK from the budgetary side of things. Very similar conversation between Fund 30 and Fund 40 in terms of services. Vast majority of our dollars go out to purchase services. We're paying Illinois Central, Sunrise, Citizens Taxi, other transportation companies. So those are all considered purchase services. IMRF social security, since we are an IMRF employer, we have to make our contributions, as I mentioned, to IMRF. So it's, we collect for IMRF, we collect for Medicare, and then we collect for social security taxes. Obviously, Medicare is attached to everybody. Social security is not attached to certified staff, but it's attached to classified staff. And then any costs related to IMRF and all of those, the vast majority, 99% of those dollars come from the budget, specifically in property taxes. On the expenditure side, they're all benefits, they're all external, so 100% of that goes out. And then a couple other major highlight areas, so we talked about the capital projects fund. One thing, especially for those that are new to our board, the way that the tax levy works and how it's extended by the clerk's office, traditionally, in the past, if we had tax objections, and those objections had refunds associated with them after tax payments were made, those refunds were deducted from any tax payments into the district, we could never recoup those reductions, meaning those dollars were not spread out through the rest of the tax base. A couple years ago, there was a supplemental tax revenue law approved at the state level, which allows the clerk and then in essence, the treasurer to collect for those refunds that have occurred. Those get put on your actual tax levy as a separate supplemental line item. The first couple of years, it's been about $400,000, it's not significant, but we've been putting all that money into capital projects, not using it for salaries, benefits, anything else like that. Figure it made, Dr. Schuler and I, when this first came out, had the discussion, figured it makes most sense, since those are some bonus dollars that we are catching up on for taxes that were refunded in the past, and that was invested inside of capital projects, knowing the amount of work that we have to do, continue to do moving forward. Interest earnings in there is next to nothing, because we typically have a very small fund balance in there. And then we're, at this point, as I've talked about, we're transferring over $6 million from O and M. And then last thing, working cash, there's no expenditures out of working cash, just revenue, and then we have $925,000 pegged for interest earnings. So if you look at the total budget in aggregate without the $6 million, 229 and a half in revenue, and there's your split between local, state, and federal. This is what it looks like overall on how that split is allocated by source. Not quite 80% from property taxes, so still the biggest chunk of the overall budget. You look at it from an operating perspective, we're at $210 million. This does include IMRF and social security. You see the breakdown between local, state, and federal there. There's that allocation on an operating perspective, so because debt service drops out, property tax percentage of that overall collection drops a little bit. If you look at expenditures all in, we're at $232.8 million. There's the breakdown between each of the major categories. There's the breakdown from a pie chart perspective. So of the overall total budget, that's every single fund, 66% of our total expense, again, not operating, everything in aggregate, but 66% of our total budget is attributed to both salaries and benefits. When you look at the operating side of things, so we have $24.5 million in operating expenditures in each of the major areas. Here's the allocation. When you look at the operating side of things, again, 76% salaries and benefits, so three, every three out of four dollars is attributed to headcount. And then just a quick recap, and this is off a little bit, just in terms of a few dollars, because rounding, pulling data out of an Excel spreadsheet and just aggregating it, technically, it's not operating balance, technically, the overall deficit is $3.2 million. But if you break it down into some areas, specifically, if you look at the negative debt, or in essence, the deficit on a Fund 60, which is slightly more than $2 million, those are all capital projects that we're paying for. You look at, you subtract Fund 30, which is a debt service fund. If we add back in the surplus out of IMRF social security and subtract the developer donations that we're looking at, using out of Fund 20, actually have an overall surplus. So you've got to work through some math to get to it. The budget itself will look like it's a deficit. When I input all of this data I already have into the state form, you actually have a positive operating balance in the state form, because the state form doesn't include that transfer, that $6 million transfer. So the state form shows that you have actually a $5.35 million tentative surplus on the operating side as of this moment. There's the allocation of revenues across the board. Education is our biggest fund, as you can see. Too fast. There's the expenditure side of things. Education's still the biggest expenditure allocation by fund. And then if you just look at the operating side of things, which includes IMRF, there's that overall operating balance of 5.8. In the state budget form, we would actually pull, IMRF is pulled out of there, which gets you to that roughly $5.35 million budget. And then below there is really what the state form looks like, except I've added in Fund 50, just to give you a bit of a perspective when we're looking at those five major funds, and that's debt service and capital projects. When we take all of those considerations into account, actually, we have an adjusted surplus over, of just about $1.5 million, which is about three-quarters of 1% of your overall operating budget. Just a little year-over-year comparison between revenues and expenditures year over All right, for those of you that have fallen asleep, it's time to wake up.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from the board? Somebody start.
I'll start. I'll go first. Thank you, and I absolutely appreciate your help and always answering questions. I just definitely appreciate that. So I think I'm going to hold this. As I noted in my pre-note questions, kind of stuck on that Fund 60. So if we look at the summer expenditures for capital improvements, it's, you said 9.9?
In aggregate, it's $9.9 million.
Million.
Correct.
But we're transferring $6 million out of '20.
Correct.
Into '60.
Correct.
The other portion of that is coming from the developer donations, and then the...
Actually, not. Developer donations as of now is staying inside of Fund 20.
Correct. But for all purposes, the other, like that $1.6 million is going towards the $9.9 million that we're spending this summer.
Correct.
So then the other $2 million is coming from...
It's sitting in your fund balance in Fund 60 already. You have $2.4 million sitting in fund balance in Fund 60.
And that is from, so it's not ESER funds? I just wanted to...
It was. It had to be ESER funds that we moved over last year.
Okay.
So that we didn't get ourselves in trouble again with the material weakness in the single audit. We were not anticipating when the budget was approved, we would have to put that in there. All that conversation happened after the budget was approved. Capital projects would be around $450,000 right now, but we moved almost $2 million of that revenue that would have been targeted towards Fund 20 for ESER reimbursement into Fund 60, because that's where it was paid from in the prior fiscal year. So we're paying $8 million out of Fund 60.
Right. Plus the $1.6 from Fund 20.
Correct. To get to the overall, but in Fund 60 by itself, I need $8 million. I need to pay $8 million out of there. I've got $2.4 million in there, so I just need to move over $6 million to take care of the $8 million out of there.
Okay.
That will look different if we end up putting everything together, but as of today.
I'm sort of a fan of putting everything together, but that's not where I want to go for a second. So my biggest concern is that, for all practical purposes from this year's, from this budget, we are only transferring $6 million from our budget for our Sherman Durgess obligation, which concerns me for the year, for next year. Like, how do we get back to 7.2, which I actually think is low? You know, if nothing else, we should account for inflation every year as we... You know, if nothing else, we should account for inflation every year as we target our Sherman Durges.
It's a static number year-over-year, yes.
Right. So how do we, how do we do that? That's my big concern with everything that I've looked through. I'm concerned that we are not maintaining even where we were three years ago with 7.2, because there has been inflation, and we need to really target those basic improvements.
If we were to pay for every one of those capital, $9.9 million in capital expenditures, I would need to transfer 7.7 million to make sure that we had enough to cover it. So if, in fact, there's a conversation about ensuring that the board is adhering to a Sherman Durges plan, then we certainly can make the change, pay for the LLCs out of the Capital Projects Fund, which means I'm gonna have to transfer more money into capital projects to pay for it, and that would end up being about 7.7 million transfer to make sure that we can pay for everything out of capital projects.
For next year's budget.
For Fiscal '24, correct. These are all projects that happen in the summer. We don't start paying for those projects until July 1st.
Correct.
And then, and then all those charges are paid for in the same fiscal year.
And that, that makes sense to me, I think, just going forward as a board. I think that's a conversation we need to have about, because now we are looking at middle school expenses, which I'm not super sure how, if we were to go some of the routes that have been discussed, like where's, where are those payment funds going to come from? Like, once we enter that? So I'm just, that's my concern. There's one other question.
Before we move on, Angela, I would like to use our committees for that examination, right, both our facilities and our funds, to work through that together. Because it's kind of a, it's such a linked thing, right? And love those committees to bring us back, kind of what they learned. Your point about, is it enough, is a valid question. Let's have the committees kind of go through that work and get back to us, or go back to us as a board, because it's a broader topic. I think it's great.
Well, there's a fundamental stewardship question there of our commitment to Sherman Durges and the notion of inflation adjusting it. So I guess I'd wonder, why is that not committee of the whole discussion?
It will be. I just think there's a lot of work that has to be done, and I think that occurs in the committees, and then we get together and talk about what the committees have found. It's a great point. Thank you.
And so going back to the 1.6 that's in Fund 20, and whether or not we move it to Fund 60, I mean, I know it really doesn't make a difference, because we're spending the money either way. I think I might vote for keeping it together, but that's just kind of my thought. One last question, and you've done a great job of answering so many questions, so I appreciate it. This came up with, I think Julie asked for, asked a question that triggered Erica providing a nice document outlining how many students in the district we outplace and pay outplacement fees for, and I just had a question on that. So I think the document said that the state reimburses, I'm sorry, we are required to pay for two times the average cost per people. Is that essentially three times, or truly two times?
We're legally responsible for up to two times.
Okay.
But, but through, but there potentially could, those costs could be higher than that, depending on the actual facility. All of that would be agreed to at the table when discussing student placements through an IP.
Okay. When I look through the accounts payable, it's pretty steep.
Yep.
And from Erica's nice handout, if you do the math, it looks like it would be about $2.5 million a year, but I know that it's more than that. So that's where I was kind of like, where, where are we not? So it's more of that negotiated, it's not truly a two times the...
Well, legal responsibility is two times what it ends up being.
Thank you for saying that a second time. I heard it that time. Thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Have a seat. You guys judge for position.
Let's just go around.
The pages aren't numbered, but there's a page headed Expenditures by Type, All Funds.
John, will you talk, even though you're not hearing it in the mic, just the...
The page, it's not numbered, but the page headed Expenditure by Type, All Funds, does not show debt service per se, I don't believe. Is that wrapped into something else, or is that not part of this analysis?
Ooh, let me get to it. Come on. It is in there, it's gonna be in, come on. It's gonna be in that bottom line, that's dues, fees, tuition, other.
Okay. Thank you. And you also made a comment about TIF 2, and I just, I want to clarify that the money that was being paid into the TIF by the taxpayers having the new properties, when the TIF expired, that money from then on into the future, every year, is gonna go out to the taxing bodies, including the district. It was not a one-time thing.
Correct.
It's a one-time bump, but from there forward, it continues.
Correct. And it'll increase at the same pace as what you approve for your levy increases.
Right. And it's no new taxes to the property owners.
It's shifting where the dollars end up.
Yeah. That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
I need you to review one topic that I apologize, because you already addressed it. It was on the evidence-based funding and when we go from the one tier to the next tier. Can you go over of how close we are and when you think we'll potentially make a change?
Sure. So there are four tiers in the evidence-based funding model. The number of the tier doesn't equate to the wealthiest. So Tier 1 is technically the lowest tier, not the wealthiest tier. Tier 2 is next, Tier 3. We're in Tier 3 right now. Our funding ratio percentage within the evidence-based funding model is at 95% as of last year. Each year where the state does invest more dollars, new dollars into education, we'll get a certain percentage of that based on where we fit within the tiered system, which then will increase our overall percentage. So we moved from like 92 and a half to 95% from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23. We'll move a little bit slower more, because the dollars shrink, but it's possible, within the next five years, we could end up at 100% fully funded from the evidence-based model perspective, which means we would move into Tier 4. Tier 4 is the last tier to receive any type of money, and they get 1/10th of 1% of all new money.
It does not, you're not losing any existing money. You're getting from the state. It just simply means for every new dollar the state invests moving forward, we're gonna get a little bit less of that. But we're not, there's, there's kind of a whole harmless to where you are from. So it's not like we'll step back by half a million dollars or anything. It just means any new dollars, we get a smaller chunk.
Okay. That makes sense. And then I had a few questions on the sheet of Staffing and Enrollment. Is this the appropriate topic?
Sure.
Okay. So on the student-to-staff ratio, is that certified and non-certified staff?
Yes. It's all, it's all staff, except for Jefferson and SSC.
But, but it's only certified. This is only certified.
This is certified and classified.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay.
If, can we get this chart broken down by the...
Yes.
Two types?
I think we need to check that, Brian, but, okay.
That's exactly what Julie told me it was.
Okay.
Because she was looking at the totality of service within a building, minus Jefferson, minus the SSC, in terms of headcount.
And then what has been the impact of class sizes for these sort of three time periods?
Say again?
Average class sizes through these two time periods. So because it includes, or potentially includes certified and non-certified, I wanted to know, like, how have the size of your average classroom changed over these three time periods?
Yeah.
And maybe we need to figure out if this chart is certified versus not certified.
Yeah. I believe Dr. O'Keefe, so I'm not, I will, will trust on that. I guess, Julie, your question is, you're curious what's happening to class sizes, right? So certainly from 19, 1920, year at the front end of the pandemic, into the years of the pandemic, class sizes came down significantly. They started to come back up. I, I think your class sizes into this upcoming year are gonna approach closer to where they were in 1920. They're not above that, whereas I think that's accurate. The fact they're probably still a little bit below where they were in, in 1920, but, but we have, we've brought them back closer to where they were in 1920. I, I think there's one other visual that might be helpful for Dr. Slaggy to bring back and, and share with you in the, in the future. So as we look by building at staffing ratios, we do look specifically at instructional staff that are directly supporting kids. So your classroom teachers and all of your intervention staff, and it's really that ratio that we look at as a, as a, as kind of a comparative measure, because especially as kids are receiving kind of their direct instruction, especially within core areas at the elementary level, that's the ratio that we're, we're most concerned with. And, and actually going in 1920, front end of the pandemic, we actually had a fairly lengthy discussion, Eric, you might have still been on CAC at that point, where we looked at strategy and, and really kind of identified the fact that there, there are two ways that I think you can look at kind of use of resource and, and size, right? One is just strictly class size, so how many kids are assigned to each homeroom? Two is what is your ratio of student to certified staff as kids are receiving instruction? And that needs to account for your math intervention, your reading intervention, your multilingual staff, others who are, are doing that. And, and I think our, certainly the strategy going into 1920 was to, was to continue to keep those essential intervention staff, kind of thus keeping your overall ratios reasonably low, but recognizing in order to do that, you, you couldn't run incredibly low, like low, like core class size ratios, right? So Chris, fill in the gap on anything that I've, I've kind of missed.
No, I, I think you, you hit all of them, Dr. Schuler. I would, and I would say, even as we go into this coming school year '23, '24, and we look a little bit more like we were in 1920, our ratios at the most part at most buildings are actually still lower when we look at the combination of classroom teacher, reading specialist, or reading coach, math coach, math interventionist, PACE and ML staff. You combine all those, because those folks are in the classroom and out of the classroom, you're at a lower point than before 1920, as we, as we come out of it. Now, some of those needs have shifted, because we always allocate based upon the needs of the students at the building. Other than that, nothing really missed.
I'll just follow up on that. If you take a really quick look at the Illinois State Report Card, it gives us the total number of teachers, full-time equivalent, and, so I don't know if teachers also includes, I think it would be any certified or professional license-holding individual. So in 2017, we had 847, and in 2022, we had 888, but yet we have less kids now than we did in 2017. So I think it's 12.68 to 1 ratio. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you, Angela and Julie, for already chipping away at my list a little. The changes in the Title I, II, III funds, et cetera, is that driven by demographic changes or changes in the, the funding model?
Changes in allocations at the federal government level.
Okay.
And then, but that, so they will determine what the overall budget is, and then each individual school budget is based on local demographics for our actual output.
Okay. And then, obviously, you know, always good finding additional revenue, so that, that additional SIR grant is great. At the same time, I always kind of wonder, when we're finding things, does that mean there's more out there that we haven't found? And I just don't know if there's, there's opportunities for partnerships for people to help us maybe identify revenue that we haven't identified yet, or just what the thought process is around that.
In terms of grants available to Illinois school districts, there's nothing else sitting there that we've not tapped into. We, we have begun internally with many of the different departments, talking about ways that each of those departments could find some partnerships, but we're at the very forefront of that conversation.
Okay. And then, not on the, the question front, but just, I guess, a comment front. I mean, this is very helpful, great, thorough. The one, I guess, being newer to this question, I would have is, is there a reason we don't attach a more thorough, I guess, list of assumptions behind this and flag what the biggest changes versus past history are, to make the community review of this a little easier? As I've looked at what some other districts do, sometimes there's a little bit more in terms of, you know, Reader's Guide, and so I'm just curious about our philosophy.
Really, this has been me following Bill Farley's past practice, but if there's something that the board would like to see that's more in-depth, I'm happy to put it together for you.
Yeah, I mean, for me, some of the, the bigger things there would be, like the staffing and enrollment assumptions that go along with it, as well as, you know, things that every district family will feel like, what are the fee changes that go along with this? Things of that nature.
Yep. Yeah, and just in reference to the fees, those were flat year-over-year. Those, those we approve way in advance of when we bring this budget to you, but, yeah. I'll, I'll make those changes for the final version presentation.
Two comments, one backward-looking and one forward-looking. Sherman Durges. So we, as a board, created that policy, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we created that policy in, I think, early 2017, before the referendum at the time. And we did that, we found some recognized financial formula, algorithms that looked at, looked at each individual building, the square footage of the age, the work that had been done, the projected work that would have to be done in the future, that kind of projected on a year-by-year basis, what our investment would need to be every year. I think, like, we, we kind of anchored on that 7.2 million as one of the first years that was in that series of annual investments that was projected to be required. We used that 7.2 million to then, over a period of years, kind of balance out our operating budget increases with what we're gonna spend out on fund balance. So Sherman Durges is just a reference to the policy. We never, it's true, we've never indexed that number by inflation, certainly the cost of construction, especially the last couple of years, has way exceeded that. So we, so that's what the reference to the 7.2 million as Sherman Durges, it's not, it's really just kind of a reference to a, a, a policy we put in place in 20, early 2017. We haven't really altered that number every individual year based on whatever that spreadsheet should, complicated spreadsheet, really complicated. So that's kind of the history behind that number and what the policy is. Is that a fair summary of that?
Yeah. Yeah, good.
And then, and then secondly, more forward-looking, you know, not really comments about this budget, but really comments about future budgets. You know, we know, and I said this when we first started talking about SIR funding, we, you know, we've made all these investments in staff that we know has had a positive benefit for students. We know that funding is running out pretty much at the end of this budget that we're looking at. We know that the challenge of balancing student-teacher ratios, all the needed support services, resources, specialists that are necessary for all of our students, we have, you know, in a couple of years, as we know going through our contract, we have some, this board has some big decisions to make in the future. You know, we, we felt pretty good, we can get through the next couple of years, but we knew that in two years out, three years out, bigger decisions were gonna have to be made. So kind of a general question that we don't need to answer now, but like, so what decisions does the board need to make or weigh in on in the next couple of years to position for the, you know, that, those harder, harder decisions in a couple of years? So that's kind of my, my future-looking, not asking a question about this budget, but recognizing that we're gonna have to make, or whoever's on the board in a couple of years is gonna have to make some tough decisions. So I'd like to know kind of, as we go, what those, what those parameters we need to give you like, you know, Fund 20, Fund 60, I know it's not really a big difference, but it's, it's a kind of decision that sounded like you wanted us to weigh in on.
It, it, it's, these are your dollars, and, and you've operated in a way where you've paid for capital projects out of Fund 60, because of specifically what was told to you by your auditor. It was interesting to me that Nick was okay with spending it out of Fund 20, even when I mentioned that to Dr. Schuler, he goes, well, that's contrary to what he's actually mentioned to us in the past. But I think, but I think is, the, the hook behind that or the premise was, money's already sitting there. So it might be easier from an explanation perspective to say, we're using money that's already sitting in fund balance there, but to me, doesn't matter, doesn't matter where it comes from. It's just a shifting of numbers.
I guess my opinion on that is whatever's the easiest to explain, because it's really, really complicated, even after looking at this for 10 years, it's so hard to understand, especially for somebody in the community.
Yep.
So regardless of... So regardless of whatever the auditor says or what the financial practice is, whatever's, if either one would work, what's easier to explain to the community? My only feedback would be is, I would probably balance what our auditors tell us in terms of priority, frankly. They audit the books, they report on us, right? And that's, I want to make sure we're compliant with that, just as a general statement. So I don't know what he told, well, we can talk about the other stuff later. It can come, I think, you know, as a general statement, I'd like all the work to go through the committees, right? Because that's where, that's where the detailed conversation can have and the choices. And then the committees can come back and report to the broader board on the choices they found and the pros and cons versus explored as a whole, right? I think that, again, elevating the visibility and the work and the importance of our committees, that's really important. Does anyone else have questions? All right, board, I need a motion, thank you Brian. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the posting of the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. It set the public hearing for said budget on Wednesday, August sixteen, twenty twenty-three, at seven o'clock PM at the School Service Center located at one thirty West Park Avenue, Wheaton, Illinois, six oh one eight nine, as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Jerpy, Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Action item number two, approval of the resolution authorizing transfer of monies from operations and maintenance fund to capital projects fund. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I don't think there's any additional information. This was really, this is the mechanic in what you just reviewed in the budget.
Board, any questions, comments? All right, hearing now on board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital project fund as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Long, Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Action number three, approval of DARE fifth grade, keep it real program materials. Dr. Schuler?
I haven't, Dr. Slag, any additional information you want to share? I know you provided the board with the community feedback on this.
Yeah, just a, a few comments. Obviously, feedback's been shared with the Board of Education after last month's presentation that we completed with the police, Wheaton Police Department. One note I did want to make, got a really good question from the Board of Education about how we plan to evaluate the impact of the program. And kind of three factors we'll look at in evaluating the impact of the program if, if approved is, is looking at some of the student discipline pieces for our students in fifth grade related to decision-making and some of the key tenants that are taught within the program. We'll also look at our SABERS, which is a screener data that you've learned about this year as well. We'll look at our fifth grade students, not only on a short-term basis, but potentially look at some of the long-term stuff we could do as well. And then lastly, we'll design a tool for our students and teachers and administration to give us feedback. So we'll take all three of those pieces and effect when evaluating the program. So just wanted to make sure I addressed that was a really good question last time we spoke. So that's all I got.
Any questions?
I just had one comment on it. And I, I appreciate the feedback loop and how we've had that with our curriculum. And then if there are any other like curriculum pieces, if we could kind of evaluate how this works and how our teachers feel about this program versus other ones that, I thought that was a useful question that came in from the community. We've seen with the math and with the ELA, how the content of the curriculum matters. And so it seems like this, the, I remember from the presentation of just how the decision-making curriculum would be really helpful for students and just making sure that they're getting the best available of what's out there.
Thank you.
Just a, a comment, you know, the partnership with the Wheaton Police, I think, is great. And, you know, based on both what was shared with us as well as other research, it's clear that there's been some studies of the efficacy, which is great. The concern I have, and I know we're understandably trying to move quickly, is it doesn't seem that we've looked at alternative curriculums for this area and whether something might have even higher efficacy. So in addition to the, the internal feedback as we evaluate after the year, I would just suggest that we, you know, do some, at least cursory look at what other DARE-like curriculum is out there to say, is there something that is superior efficacy?
Anyone else?
I would just take a little bit different approach on this. The Wheaton Police Department, and I can't speak for others, but Wheaton Police Department has been working really, really hard on community outreach. Shop with a cop, cops and bobbers, they take kids fishing, they're doing a lot of things to build relationships with the community that really wasn't being done before. And to me, this is just another element of building a sense of confidence and trust between the police department and our residents. And I think it's really important.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge.
I agree with those sentiments. I may have said something very similar this week. I think it's a great, it's part of their outreach program. That's how I view this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, similar comments as I made last time. I really like this concept. You know, when I thought, think of DARE as like some of the comments we saw about drugs, but this seems so much more comprehensive. Talking about peer pressure, stress, dealing with stressful situations, non-verbal communication and listening, bullying and helping others. Those are all, I think, really important skills that tie into social emotional learning. To me, it feels like we're teaching to the whole child, not just to the academic pieces of it. I really like the fact that it's fifth grade because we know as these kids go into the middle school, middle school years, that's where everything becomes really difficult and different. So I like that kind of sequence going into the next year. I, I think one of the things I really want to re, hope we reinforce is the whole parent engagement as it relates to this. I know that at the end of this attachment, they have family talk pieces. But I think the more that we can communicate and engage our parents, our fifth grade parents to be aware of this, support their kids, reinforce the skills that they're going to learn, I think it'll be more, higher, higher positive outcome for those students if we, if we make sure that the parents are fully engaged in that. So the more we can do to promote this, reinforce this, you know, make sure that they're part of the team. Dr. Slag, you made three points. What was the first one? I didn't quite understand the first one.
Just the point on how we would evaluate the program. And so one of the pieces that we're exploring, I'm exploring it with Dr. Ozmakowski, is how can we look at some of the student discipline incidences that happen with our fifth grade students related to some of the tenants that are taught in the program?
Got it.
Things that may fall into decision-making or impulsive decision-making. Can we look at some of our discipline pieces pre the program being taught and then post? Can, can we look at that short-term, long-term?
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions for board members? Okay, let's see. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the DARE fifth grade, keeping it real program materials as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bladner?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson, Mr. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bladner?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, oral reports. We have one oral report sitting out on the agenda, and that's the Vision 2026 Middle School Capital Projects Concept Update. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so you have in your green folders, a legal size documents, got a couple of, of pages. It's called Monroe Joint Use Study from, from Perkins and Will. And, and so just a little bit of context or history on this document that, that you're looking at. So don't look up on the screen, you're not going to see it up there, you're only going to see it in front of you on paper if you, if you pull this one out. So I guess a little bit of context or history, kind of where this came from. I think board will remember that we previously toward the end of last school year, presented some concepts, some conceptual options for each of the three middle schools that we were looking at. I think the terminology we used in that was kind of a mid and a high option for each of the schools, all driven around trying to solve the needs or the problems that we identified at those schools as well as kind of educational improvements. And, and so we've, we've continued to move forward, I think, based on those options. Board didn't make any decisions, still has not made any decisions, just gave us direction to execute a community engagement, process and plan through the fall and come back to the board in October with some of that feedback. Following those initial discussions, both through some of the input from the community engagement team that we've assembled and just some other community input that came in, there were some questions asked about an option that was explored actually at a, at a kind of neighboring district to us that really looked at the opportunity to simultaneously address a need at their middle school with some of the community need and opportunity and looking at recreational kind of athletic space. And so we, kind of based on that feedback, went and visited a school over in Lombard, kind of understand what they did and, and how they approached it. And then actually just came back and explored a question of, is that even a viable option for us to consider? So sort of high-level question, basically, is there an option three we should consider at any of the schools? And really based on kind of physical site itself, Monroe is really the only school where it made sense for us to look at that just simply based on land availability there. Franklin, you candidly just don't have available extra land. Edison, there is some adjacent land, but there'd be some significant parking constriction to trying to sort of add on some recreational space that might be used at off times when the, the school is not. So we really kind of landed on looking at Monroe as, as, as a kind of a test site. So we asked Michael to, to actually take a look at that site, give us kind of a, of a test concept option. And, and so we brought this back to our facilities committee. They were intrigued by the option, wanted us to at least bring it forward, share it with the board. And, and really kind of the question after, you understand at a very high level, the option tonight is just, is this something that you would like for us to continue to kind of move forward with exploring? So that at least it's in the hopper as we look at some of the community engagement through the fall. Very high level, what, what this option does is it looks at kind of a, of a, some of the joint use within our facilities. So we have certain areas on our site that typically are joint use. In our case with the, the park district, and that usually involves some of the outside space around the school. Obviously, in the case of Monroe, kind of all of the graph park facilities that sit around the school. But then we also have some areas inside of the school that are typically joint use. Most, in most cases, it's our gym. I think in the case of some of the concepts that we're talking about though at Monroe, some of the performing arts space could be joint use as well, right? Where we obviously would use that space during the school day. Community would have use of that facility outside of the, the school day. So, you know, kind of beyond when the school athletic programs or fine arts programs are, are done, right? They would be shared use facilities. A lot of our gyms are, but very candidly, that kind of indoor recreation, indoor sports space is at really high demand within the, the community. And so any opportunity to expand some of that in a, in a shared use, I think, you know, would, would be well-served. And so, so we kind of looked at, at that space and what you'll see in kind of the new concepts. So you don't see any reconfiguration internally. So you don't see how some of the new spaces would impact our own concepts that we've already developed. But at, at a very high level, what would involve is really focusing new added space on those recreational facilities. Kind of the shared use recreational facility. And so if you look at what is the, the third page out back, you see kind of a dark blue section that is new indoor recreational facility. The, the way that we've kind of modeled or showed it is a combination of what could be both hardcore and perhaps some turf indoor space. And then that kind of pink color is the new fine arts, performing arts space. But, but conceptually, those new spaces, again, would, would be shared use in the, in the neighboring school district. They're not doing, they're not working directly with their park district. But, but part of that is because they don't have the relationship with their local park district that I think that, that we do. So very, very likely, if we were to develop kind of a multi-use facility, we would probably look to the park district first as the, as the, the partner in that. But, but if you, you really think about kind of the new spaces being focused on those indoor rec and, and performing arts spaces, it frees up a lot of space inside of the building that could be used for the renovation concepts that we were talking about, science labs, some of the, the special education areas is you, you have some kind of existing space that could potentially be repurposed and kind of rethought of. So whereas you're, the concepts, you've already seen it at Monroe, the kind of new build spaces in a few different parts of the building were focused on the needs that we identified. This would focus the new building on, on those kind of recreational shared use concepts. The other thing that you see with this concept, if you come to the front of the building, is that if you expand some of your evening and weekend recreation use facilities, you really are going to have to, to try to look at how you potentially expand parking, right, at the, at the site. And so what you also see is kind of a new test concept that would expand parking in front by basically potentially combining kind of two separate lots into one and connecting them and potentially bringing that lot out closer to Manchester Road. We have not tested that concept at the city yet, just want to say that, that very clearly. There's some stormwater elements that we'd have to, to likely deal with, right, in, in moving it forward. But just as a, as a test concept, it didn't make a lot of sense to kind of do a test concept on the recreation piece without really looking at, is there a possibility of expanding that, that parking? We were with facility committee, there were also some questions asked about, is there potentially some, some kind of shared use concept even around parking if you look to the Fairgrounds property, which I think could be, right? It's definitely something that, that, that we could, could explore as well. But really, our goal tonight was just to sort of introduce, right, the, this new notion. We have talked with the, the park district about it. And they're having some of the same conversation at their levels, just to even understand if there's potentially some interest on, on their side. But, but we wanted to just kind of get some, again, the natural tendency is going to be to kind of dive into some of the detail on this. I'd really encourage you to resist doing that, right, in this, this sort of initial piece. It, it is really just sort of a, of a, of a test level concept to say, is there enough interest in kind of this notion that we'd spend a little more time really building out this? And of course, obviously, this is potentially contingent on the park district's interest in, in this as well. Because there might be some other test concepts that we could look at as well that go kind of other directions from the, the building. But, but that can't happen without that kind of intergovernmental cooperation.
So I guess just a question on this, and I'm sorry if I missed it, it's been a long day. But the objective behind this, I mean, I, I praise the creativity. I've seen other districts, like Batavia High School has an amazing fine arts facility that I, I'm guessing they've managed to convert into a revenue stream, honestly, given how, how in-demand it is. Is this something we're exploring because we think it will defray the cost of facilities that we were already looking to add here? Or what's, what's the driver?
Yeah, so I, I think, I think two things. Yes, one, it could potentially defray some of the, the costs as you're looking at, at, you know, some shared responsibility for the, the build of the, of the new shared space. But it's really maximizing the opportunity to also put money toward facilities that are going to get much more regular use, both from the school and from the community. So I think a, a shared understanding that indoor recreation space desperately needed within the, the community. So it's kind of recognizing a shared interest with a community partner in the park district.
So the only thing I'd add, and I think that's exciting then, is oftentimes it feels like we look for what's the minimum viable product? How, how little can we invest to meet educational needs? In this case, I would wonder, you know, if we talk to other districts that have done things like this, is there actually a benefit to going bigger? Do you actually upscale those facilities because you'll be able to drive more use and, and squeeze more value out of it? Just a thought.
Yeah. Eric, I think that's a, that's a fair thought. Would require some different kind of test concepts, and I think how you, you looked at it with space, but I guess a fair thought.
Any other questions?
I'll offer an anecdotal experience, I guess. So. So, visiting graph park daily, I'm amazed at how often the fields are rented out into so many different groups, and then winter comes and the snow comes, and, you know, like, it's not in use because the weather isn't conducive to that. So, I would think anecdotally, there would be a demand for that indoor space. It's a great collaboration with the park district. I know park district is always looking for indoor space because of weather constraints. I'm just curious what the budget implications would be, so, yeah.
I would like to extend the discussion beyond the park district. You mentioned the fairgrounds, the county, there may be other entities. You've got Windmere close by, could they use some of these facilities at different times? Are there other county offices that might have some use for it? I would like to explore as much as we could in terms of other potential users.
That triggered a thought I had. Would there be any consideration of having, because in Monroe, currently, in their gym area, there is like a fitness center, like having a community-based fitness center where residents could access on a paying basis, I mean, a smaller, something like what Winfit has, potentially, that could be used during the school day for the students, but then open up the evening, although you couldn't have people there during the day, so.
Anyone else?
Of course. Well, Julie and I previewed this, what, a couple, six weeks ago, maybe, on the facility committee. First off, philosophically, I love the idea of partnership. I recognize it's a, you know, a needed additional resource for the community, it's for the kids. This is great, you know, as Angela said, this is a very engaged site with all kinds of recreational and sports activities. It's now lost upon me that this would largely benefit the Whedon Park District residents, and I don't know what that would mean to Warrenville Park District residents. I think one of the other things that I had in my head was, can you do something to the east, but with that property line there, reconfiguring the property to the east? We know how that community would feel about that. As we explored the Jefferson solution or the early childhood center solution a few years ago, I think, I think the diagrams in terms of the access is well conceived, and I think that's doable. I would, I guess, two things, sorry if I'm getting into the details a little bit, I'd like to see how our facility plan improvements overlay into this. There are opportunities because of this. There's three spaces in here that could basically be replaced with the pink zone. Those spaces can be recaptured for educational purposes, program purposes, maybe as it relates to middle school electives, which is identified in the work plan. From a practical standpoint, I'd like to turn it back to our architects and see if we can flip the gymnasium and the football or whatever, footsaw. As this is laid out, we would lose a gym for that school for a year. I don't know how that would work, because you have to demolish the gym to build this, so that school would not have a gymnasium available to them. So, that's maybe just kind of a nuance that would have to get worked out. I know it's very early, but I think it's something that we should consider, because I agree with Angela, I'd love to know what the budget implication of this is. So, we've got a budget in place or an estimate in place for, you know, the plan that we've got. This is a different plan, what's the impact of that additional budget cost? How does that get funded? How does decisions with a potential IGA play into that? Lots of details to work out before we kind of get to the next big step, but philosophically, I think it'd be great. I love the idea of partnerships, I love the idea of serving all the kids in our district, including the ones that are not, you know, in our schools, and it also would be an additional resource for other people to come in from outside our community, which has an economic benefit as people come in for resources or for activities. So, I'd love to go continue further, I don't know what the next step is, but I laid out some of the more practical ones that I see while looking at this. Thank you, Brad. Anyone else?
I just want to comment, Brad. The legal term escapes me, but I think we are limited with going east this little rectangle here.
Property lane?
Sorry.
There's a property lane, right, looks like right along the east side of our building?
No, for some, like, I remember hearing this back during the time of, when they were considering Jefferson in this part, there is illegal protection of this land because it was donated, or, I can get the details, because I know a neighbor who knows them very well, but I don't think we can go east of the yellow line, but I'll see what that is.
I think it all just needs to be explored, right?
Right, correct.
I think, you know, the feedback is great. Anyone, before I go, anyone else have anything? I think, just to reiterate a few key points, and the first one is honestly the most important, which goes back to the dare with the police department, the comment John made, as well as our work with the park district and other governmental agency, intergovernmental agency. I think it's fantastic, we continue to reach across our scope, right, and try to reach out and build relationships. That is just nothing but good for the community and nothing but good for our students, right? I just absolutely love it, and so, I just want to continue to emphasize the creativity in reaching out to the other groups. I think it just, again, is probably the most important part of this exploration, right? I think it's creative, I think there's a ton of benefit from it. There's a lot of challenges, what to figure all that out, right? And so, there's a lot of work to be done, and we'll rely on the facilities committee to do that, to do that work, but boy, I just love the creativity of it, and, you know, I strongly support continuing to explore it, for sure. All right.
So, I will add that to the facility, I think, based on our conversation earlier, I've got a short list for each of the three, not a short list, it's going to be longer lists for each of the three committees, but we'll certainly add that to the facilities.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Written, we have three written reports, sorry. The monthly financials report, I did?
Skip the discussion, I don't.
Rather important. Oh, you are, you are so correct. See, you got it correct in the moment, that's awesome.
Thank you.
I know, that's great. And I have it written down, too, and I still missed it, that's not good. All right, we have one discussion, I want to discuss an item on the agenda, discussion number one, Vision 2026 Work Plan Priorities for 2023-2024. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so, you're going to see a little bit of participation from several members of the team, but what we've identified for you tonight is kind of a proposed set of district work plans, and I just want to make a couple of quick introductory comments, and then Melissa's going to get us, get us kicked off. So, just as a reminder to the board, your dashboard, Vision 2026 Dashboard, has three tabs to the dashboard. The first one just has your strategic plan and all of the elements in the strategic plan. There's an indicators tab that has your metrics, right, that you've identified as those important to monitor, and as we move through this plan, history will get added to each of those, right, each year as the new data point gets developed. And then the third tab is the strategy tab. The strategy tab is where we've built your annual work plan. So, underneath the priorities established through your strategic plan, that's where we've identified what are the things we're going to do this year to address the goals that you've established. So, if we could just click, Jason, are you driving? Can you just click on one of the dropdowns, just because I want to show you how we've approached this, and I don't know if you're going to like the way that this looks or not, right? So, when you go to any of those dropdown tabs, we have what were your strategies or your kind of work areas from the previous year, those you will typically see marked either at 100% or in some cases, not quite to 100%, if we didn't fully get to that item last year. So, they're not all at 100%, some are a little bit less. But we felt that it probably important, both for you as a board and for community that may be tracking this, to kind of be able to see the history of work toward these goals. So, I don't want to lose the work that was already done, because I think over the course of a four-year plan, it's helpful to kind of understand where do we start and where are we getting to. But I do see that when we move beyond the second year, and I kind of fast-forward into thinking about next year, this might get a little bit unwieldy when we have a lot of different strategies. But we thought for the sake of kind of the second year that we leave your year one history, that's down on the, generally on the bottom. What you see up toward the top, then, that all have zeros, those are the kind of work plan strategies we've identified for this year, right, or at least we're proposing for this year. So, we're not going to go through every single one of these in great detail, but I've asked members of our team just to kind of highlight the kind of key work areas that they've identified. Typically, what we've done is kind of shared this with you tonight, ask you to take the next month to really look through this. This is all publicly accessible on the dashboard, right? So, this is the public view, this isn't the board-only view, doesn't mean we can't change it, we can certainly change it in the next month, but we just felt it easier to kind of work right off of this document, so you can see it, you can access it at any time. But our goal is going to be, based on your feedback, your question, your suggested additions, subtractions, anything, to kind of get this to a point by next month where you can kind of give it the formal blessing or okay. And again, you're not required to do that every year, it just helps us, I think, kind of collectively solidify what's the focus for the upcoming year, certainly within our strategic plan. That makes sense as a backdrop, so Melissa, I'll let you kick us off with the first few.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schuler. So, the first strategy on Vision 2026 is to implement learning acceleration strategies and programming. The major work tactic on this is to adopt and support the implementation of resources for core instructional areas. We do have several work projects that sit under this. So, we are at the beginning of our curriculum cycle for grade six through eight, both English Language Arts and Social Studies. We started that work last year with our teams, and we're going to continue to work with our teams this year. We also will be supporting our first year of implementation for both Bookworms, that's the K5 instructional materials for ELA, and illustrative math in grades six through eight, first year for both of those. And then, we have identified the idea of working with grades K through 12 in increasing math achievement. Specifically, we're going to focus in on communication and collaboration.
This learning acceleration period does have a technology component that we're going to be working on this year. The new section that we're going to work on is design and implement computer literacy standards into the high school curriculum. This is a new mandate by the Illinois State Board of Education that all high school students receive a course in computer literacy during high school.
Okay, moving into the second strategy, which is design and implement a balanced assessment system. This strategy is critical to support learning acceleration and measuring and monitoring student progress. Last year, our work was focused on implementing Fastbridge in grades K through eight and purchasing a new analytic tool. This year, our work includes focusing on that district analytic tool, expanding the use of it, and focusing on classroom assessment practices. Next, you're going to see the Portrait of a Graduate. So, our work last year focused on using the Portrait of a Graduate to drive the selection of instructional materials. It helped inform our selection for both illustrative math and Bookworms. This year, our work will focus on two of the components for Portrait of a Graduate, specifically in supporting our work with math, and that is collaboration and communication.
And in the technology space, we really wanted to make a concerted effort this year to look at which of the tools and subscriptions that we, as a district, support, how are they directly related to our Portrait of a Graduate work and how they support those criterias? Specifically, how those tools and subscriptions help with communication, collaboration? And then, specifically, we've seen a growing need at each of our levels to really focus in on digital citizenship opportunities, given that technology is becoming more prevalent in students' lives, and so, we see that has a great connection with problem solving and resilient learner skills.
Next is our, the strategy around post-secondary opportunities, and this work is all about college and career readiness. It includes our work in both career pathways and early college coursework. Last year, we focused on the education pathway, we created a plan for adding more dual credit courses. This year, you're going to see the following work projects. First, we're continuing to add those transferable dual-credit gen ed courses. Second, we're going to continue that focus on a fourth year of math for identified students who could benefit from that. Third, we've listed out, working with, continued working with that partnership with TCD, and then, we also have listed out expanding career pathways. We've been doing work, Mr. Spencer's been doing work on our IT pathway, but we've also identified the arts, AV, and communications pathway. Some newer projects include supporting SchoolLinks, a review of our middle school electives to be in line with career pathways, and a review of graduation requirements.
Sorry, what is SchoolLinks?
SchoolLinks is a college and career platform, and so, this was something that the board approved last year. Students have, can utilize this in grades eighth through 12, they can use it for course selection, they can use it for college and career planning, and parents will also have access to it.
Our next section here with expanding professional learning for staff, and as we recall, over the years, that District 200 has invested quite a bit of resources in our instructional coaching at all levels. And so, as part of our work last year, we gathered feedback from what we would hope a standard, universal vision of what coaching should look like at each level. So, while that's been gathered, the work this year now is going to outline what that vision looks like, based on the feedback that we gathered last year. And then, what we hope to do with that vision is to have each building set a focus for how they want to grow and strengthen their instructional coaching program at their individual building.
And then, lastly, we will continue to support our staff with the implementation of Bookworms and IM, and we will also implement our mentoring program for all new staff members this year as well.
All right, in the SEL space, our first strategy is to ensure connectedness for all students. Some of our tactics that fall underneath there, one that we'll see every single year is the utilized relationship mapping process and all of our response strategies to make sure our kids are connected to school through a trusted adult. Just one note on there, you'll see that we've updated your indicator part of your board dashboard to reflect this year's school connectedness rate. We had a 6% increase in that, we went from 89% to 95%, so, we know that the work that we're doing in the space is working based on what our kids are telling us, so certainly we want to continue that. A big part of that work also, though, is the work that our high schools are doing around co-curriculars, activities, clubs. They, we meet with our high school principals, they then meet with our activity directors, athletic directors, and really identify students that are not connected. One of those strategies is to identify kids that are going into sophomore year that were not involved in anything as freshmen, that's tactically implemented last year. We intend to do that again this year, just another note of celebration, we increased that rate from 72% to 74% of our kids from 2020, 2022 to 2023. So, we will continue that work. To further that, though, also, at the middle school level, we want to start gathering a baseline of participation and build out a system so that we can monitor all of that activity as well, and start building the same sort of systems of connectedness or participation that we do at the high school level. So, we'll also be starting to monitor that to build out a baseline for this year. And then, lastly, just in the student voice piece for school connectedness, this year, we'll be working with our secondary-level schools, myself, Mr. Biskin, Dr. Schuler as well, to build a student leadership council where we can really hear from our students around what can enhance their experience around connectedness, maybe things that they're experiencing in the student discipline space, as well as how can we enhance safety as well. So, we're looking forward to that being a work project that we collectively work on and really hear more from our students so we can enhance the experience. The second strategy in the SEL space is to implement social-emotional learning programming that's aligned with our SEL framework. Just a reminder, our framework's pretty comprehensive, outlines five areas, some highlights and some new pieces that we'll be taking on this year's work project. One is to really tackle behavior, especially at the elementary level. We're excited, September 6th and September 13th, we'll be bringing in probably about over 100 folks, leadership teams from every one of our elementary schools, to provide a foundational training on how they a foundational training on how they can really provide a high level of behavioral support, classroom management, and high expectations school-wide. We call that tier-one behavioral work, really so that our kids can learn at high levels through a train-of-the-trainer model. So we're looking forward to that work. At the secondary level, Mr. Biskin and I are partnering to support our schools in a quarterly process where we're evaluating, analyzing, discussing student discipline rates, looking at the supports and/or the actions that are taking, accompanying student discipline. The reason why that's a joint project really between Mr. Biskin and I is from my side is the support piece, the SEL supports that we put in place, how we look at some of the interventions and pieces. And then on the other side of it is really, are we appropriately disciplining? Are we consistent in our discipline processes? Are we making sure that we're holding students accountable and really following some of those pieces? So we're looking forward, said as a joint project, to make sure, again, we're providing the best learning environment for our kids. Another strategy that I'll point out that will be new as we go into this year is that we have a team actively working on an attendance improvement process. And really, the goal of this is to streamline supports. We want to make sure that our students are coming to school. We have seen a drop-off in this area post the pandemic. And while we do actively have strategies in place, whether they be proactive or reactive on the communication and support pieces, we see an area where we can get better here. So you'll see more and more coming on what we're doing around attendance improvement. We provide the communication, support we're providing, and just a more consistent process. And then lastly, a piece I'll just note in here, we'll be adopting the crisis prepare model. Touched on this a little bit as we started this work last year, but this is a model that supports the mental health of students post-crisis. It's a nationally-recognized model, supported by the National Association of School Psychologists, and we intend to fully implement this work this year through training. So we're, we're excited for that as well. Last piece I'll just touch on is just utilizing assessments and screening data to differentiate our support. We've worked really hard the past five years to build out a model to say, how do we monitor really the impact of social-emotional learning for our students, and then how do we allocate resources and support? So you'll see in there is really just how do we utilize a balanced assessment piece that looks at both our emotional and behavioral health data to help us make decisions at the building level and at the district level, so not just specifically or to remain to Sabers, but to all of our conferences.
Next up is our fiscal health of the organization. So these are four static objectives that'll be in place throughout our full Vision 2026 model. So certainly ensuring that our balance is budgeted on an annual basis, ensuring that our financial and HR needs are reliant to our strategic plan, maintaining performance as it relates to financial metric areas that are conducted both at the state and potentially from an external perspective. And then fourth, making sure that all of our contracts to the best of our ability are meeting our overall financial, operational, and academic strategies. There are some updates within the strategies within that section. And then secondarily, and this is a lot of work that we've already begun with you, addressing facility projects throughout the master plan. So looking at adding more innovative space, which could be LLC, there is a separate objective for LLCs here, but that could be a driver towards what could be deemed as innovative space, innovative or flexible space in the future. We are talking about faculty plans or facility needs specifically for Edison, Franklin, and Monroe through, and I think we'll continue these discussions through our committees, you know, looking at the Sherman-Derges policy and whether or not there needs to be potentially some tweaks made to how we allocate funds on an annual basis moving forward to our facilities. We already have the elementary playground replacement plan in process. We're in, right now, in year two. We'll be moving to Hawthorne Pleasant Hill and Sandberg in the summer of '24. And then specifically, if it is defined as appropriate, we will be developing a LLC renovation plan at all levels. Part of that certainly depends on the success and the outcomes that we see from the projects at Whittier and at Johnson.
On the operational side of technology, we do have always in our mind security and stability of the, the system as a whole. One of those important goals is that our transition center will finally join our overall district network. Currently, they're on a separate network, so we'll bring them over. We are also in the middle of a very comprehensive migration of our phone system, our landlines, to cloud-based solutions, which will save the district some good funds there. We are, you know, in the process of, or will be in the process of late next year, evaluating our firewall solution. We are also always doing annual network penetration testing to make sure that we are safe and secure. And then we always have in the forefront of our security measures, ongoing phishing campaigns to teach staff best practices and how to keep themselves safe. Also, we are just continuing work. About over 75% of all information relies in this district comes from two systems, our student information system and our HR business system. We still have untapped potential in both of those systems, so we're going to be looking at other ways that we can improve workflows and efficiency with those two systems. And then last but not least, we always have to be good financial stewards in how we spend our money and what we put dollars towards when it comes to digital tools and subscriptions for staff to use. So we'll always annually look at where those funds are best placed.
Community engagements, I just, I want to say, I do appreciate that this board does continue to prioritize community engagement. That is not something that all districts do. And to clarify that on your, on your strategic plan, I think, there's a lot about the value you can place on community engagement. In terms of our first strategy, well, yeah, strategy about continuing to engage all of our stakeholders by community, came important updates, writing a community with the one who tours schools. You may have seen, we rolled out 23 new websites over the past week. That rollout so far has been pretty good. We're doing a lot of trainings for the past couple of weeks, getting our principals up to see on a brand new system that hasn't changed in over 10 years. They've been using the same one. So, but I think as community members and parents, the new communication tools that are available to us through this new partner, Real Share App to Change, is, while it's a big implementation, it's going to be a very welcome change, and I think it's going to really help us improve our communication efforts. So we're, I put this down at about 50% because we've got everything flipped, we're using that capable training and using this. And then, of course, executing our annual community engagement campaign, engagement plans, excuse me. And then this year, we do have the big task of leading and supporting a community leadership team to help gather feedback from the Board of Education regarding the facilities of three of our middle schools. And so between those two, I guess, three kind of, and then also speaking in our presence on social media, those are going to be really major work points for our, for that year. And so I say that because the third strategy in that area, I did not indicate a new, we did search for researchers under a part to partner to conduct a communication audit. I do have a good one in mind, but I think with the other work that we have going on and given the new communications tools available to us, our thought process, let's get that chance to roll out, let's see how people respond to it, and then look to maybe next year conduct a better communications audit with the person who's in our department. And then, and the second one about maintaining connectivity for municipalities and key community partners, we will still continue to do our annual kind of state and school roadshow involved with our municipalities, our local official breakfast, our brewery clubs, our lions clubs, chambers of commerce. I do still, I think actually, I'm just in several of us on our team, have regular networking groups with our various municipalities, and do have very active involvement with our chambers of commerce, service clubs, and community groups. And I think that that not only allows us to help our communities stay, community members stay informed and let's hook them in their districts, but also allows us to find great resources and volunteers to support our pathways work for the graduate. So it's listed in our community.
Thank you. As we know, there's been a tremendous amount of work centered on hiring, developing, and retaining diverse, high-quality staff. If you look at some of the strategies and the efforts under those, first one, I think we're going to support candidates. We're going to try to utilize FaceTime.
As, as we know, our, our district has done a tremendous amount of work in hiring, developing, and retaining diverse, high-quality staff. If you look at the first strategy, there's some efforts there to continue that, that work and throughout. We're going to try to utilize FaceTime and attend local colleges and try to recruit high-quality staff through, through that mode. We're going to also try to utilize the expertise of our building admin teams to see if they have different ideas that perhaps we can, we can use. And then, of course, we continue to work with our, our district staff affinity group and utilize their expertise also. We did a tremendous amount of work last year at creating competitive wages for our staff with the WWEA and the CEA this past summer, but we will, we still have some work to do with the CEA that we will continue to move forward with. When we look at proactively addressing staff shortage and workforce needs, that continues to be a focus for us. We want to continue to work with our admin teams to recruit, hire, and retain staff for those challenging jobs that are important for our, for our students. As we go down to implement a Grow Your Own Teacher Career Pathway, that was an outstanding class for our, our students, and I know you as a board had a focus on that, and we tried to bring that to you and bring our students to you so they could share that. And now we're trying to create systems that are going to help close that loop to where we have those students that, that they go through the class, they are impacted in a positive way to the point where they want to pursue this in a post-secondary way. And so we want to create some ways to keep connected with them so we can continue to follow up with them, so down the road when they are certified and they're ready to get that, that first job, that we can maintain, that we utilize the connection that we have with them, so we can try to hire them back into the district so they can continue to impact kids beyond. So that's an exciting one there. Actively support dual, dual credit. There's carryover here. We're, we're looking to make sure that dual credit is a, is a focus for our, for our students, and one of the ways to, to do that is to try to work with our staff to say, how can we make it a benefit for you to be certified in dual credit so you can then in turn impact our, our students? So that will be a focus. And then maintain and enhance a positive organizational culture. If you look at the middle one, we're going to continue to work with first responders in the community and part of our district safety committee as, as well. Something new this year, we want to spend some of our time to work on a safety umbrella, sort of an audit process that says, when someone has an idea about safety, we, we need to run it through a process to see if it meets our standards and our, and our needs within the district and our schools. And then we want to work with Chris on the prepare training and implement that mental health aspect to many of the things that, that we do, and that's sort of the glue that holds the safety plans together. So we are, we're definitely looking forward to the work we have ahead of us.
The last two things that are on that, this last piece, so we have two ways that we go about taking the temperature of our organizational culture. Obviously, Five Essentials is the state survey that's, that's done every year, and we really enhanced at the end of this year how we put that information in front of our leaders so that by building, they could really look at what aspect of culture needed to be the focus to ultimately support, especially the learning initiatives and the SEL initiatives, and then really the same with our employee morale cycles. So we introduced that toward the end of a school year and a half ago, but are now in a cycle where we do that kind of temperature check twice a year within our staff. And again, with the second round of the survey this past year, we added a drill-down capability to look at that by building so that our building principals can really put those two pieces of culture data together and identifying where the focus needs to be. So we're going to continue that, that cycle work. It's a lot.
Yeah, it is, it's a ton. Thank you.
Yeah.
Forward, any questions, comments?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I agree. A little bit overwhelming, even some of the stuff that I print out this morning is new on the screen. I have lots of different comments, I won't go through all of them, I might just email you some specifics. But big picture, and I just came, came up with this, you know, a lot of this is kind of continuation of things we've done, the curriculum, the assessments, the implementation of curriculum, how it relates to student achievement. That, to me, my perspective, that feels, kind of feels like our day job, even though it's a big part of the work we're going to do, I get that. So I'm just curious, and maybe this is a conversation for the next time, but what are the, what are the truly transformative things that are embedded in this that might alter course on some things? You know, like I said, some of this is just a continuation of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years, but I'm just curious if there's something that's, I'll put that label innovative on here, I don't like using that word, but transformative, that truly maybe alters the course of what we're doing as a school district? That's kind of what I'm wondering, I'm not looking for that response right now, I know it's complicated.
It, it is, and I guess I just am also going to recognize the fact that there might be a very different perspective even around this table on that. So I think you might consider implementation of new ELA curriculum to be our day job. I think that is a truly transformative experience when it aligns lines to the science of reading and really significantly brings up outcomes. So I did, I, I think that's fair. I just, I have a hard time, like, starting to put stuff like that into buckets because I think some of what, some of us might just sort of consider to be the, the ho-hum stuff is really what's really, really important and transformative. Fair, but.
That's fair.
But it, yeah. Anyone else?
One question, and sort of falls under Mr. Biskin's, or does fall under Mr. Biskin's category, but it may have been a little bit before your time. Under hired, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality staff, I'm just curious, support the implementation of CUSD 200 Staff Affinity Group. Just curious about that wording, only because when I read through the grievance around that, I thought the Staff Affinity Group was sponsored by the state or like a state-run program rather than the district. So is that part of something that?
It was, it came to be as a result of a program cosponsored by ISB and Teach Plus that created the, the state network. I think what's said in there is we certainly support the existence, I think, of the, of the group and the learning that comes from the group because it helps us to, I think, you know, when, when you really talk about expanding a high-quality, diverse staff, that starts at its foundation with making sure that we keep those that are in our organization and are already adding value and learn from their experience. So, so I.
Okay, so I guess that makes sense. So we're supporting, we're supporting, supporting our staff, correct? We're not implementing the program of the affinity group? I feel like that implic, that.
Little splitting hairs, I mean, it's in, it is a program that's in existence within the, the school. I mean, there's a group of District 200 staff that are part of, I think, that affinity group and affinity network that.
Okay. I might have more questions, or let me just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just, I'll remind everybody, you know, when we go through Dr. Schuler's evaluation process, at the end, we put, here are the priorities we have as a board, here's what we think is important. We should see those reflected in this dashboard, that whatever, whatever we were looking for the, for the Dr. Schuler to be working on with his team should be in this dashboard. And so we will continue, we should continue to come back to this dashboard on a regular basis, individually and as a group, to hold Dr. Schuler and his team accountable for delivering these, these activities, right? And that's what, that's how the work gets done, and that's how we kind of set our perspective on what we think the work should be. So think about that full circle opportunity between the evaluation and the work plan and these dashboards, right? We should continue to stay engaged with these and, and also see them in our updates, right? Our community hall updates as we go through them. So it's not just the one and done. We'll continue to come back. We'll continue to come back to this as a group, as a governance body, to say, where are we at? What are we doing, right? And we should always anchor back to the, this dashboard and the work that's going on there. So that's, that's the process. That's the, the mechanisms we use to monitor governance, in my opinion, just a reflection point for the team.
So what is the next step in, do we, do we approve these things or we just give you feedback independently?
Yeah, I, I have asked each year, we've, we've asked the board to take action to approve. I don't think that that is, that's, there's, there's no requirement that you approve it. I think that's more just for making sure that we're all kind of to, to the point that Rob just shared. What I know within a school district is that there is no lack of good ideas. So this is the focus now, two months from now, somebody else is going to have another great idea on something that we should perhaps be working on, and we just need to have clarity, obviously, within our team on where are we focusing our time and energy. And it doesn't mean that we're not agile to a new idea, but what it does mean is that if three months from now, the board comes up with the next great idea that we should work on, we have to, in fairness, have a conversation to say, is something from this list that not as important as it was at the beginning of, of the year? So as a long way, Brad, of saying, I do ask you to take action on it, just because I think it brings clarity that we're kind of in agreement to what's on the plate for this year and what it is that we're going to execute, right, in terms of strengths.
Would that, would that be an action item at the next meeting?
Yeah, most likely, unless there are significant unanswered questions. If it had to carry into September, it could carry into September, we generally take action to, take an action to approve this in either August or September. There have been some years where we haven't really even had this initial discussion until August, so we kind of accelerated making sure that at least the first draft of this was in front of you by July so that you have a month. So I, so I think next step is take some time to look through this again. You know, if you don't either understand something or to Angela's point, if there's a strategy you really want to reflect on a little bit and ask some more questions about why it's in existence or why it's written a certain way, do that over the, the next month. If we can kind of get it to a point where everybody's comfortable, we'll take action in August. If not, we'll continue the discussion and, and kind of take that action in September.
Great question, I guess, for Rob. If I summarize all my thoughts and comments, should I send it to Jeff or send it to the full board? Which, what's the best way to do it? Obviously, nobody will reply, but.
Yeah, I, I think you share with the full board. As long as we don't reply to it, there's nothing, that'll keep us out of trouble, right?
Then does that mean just like one person can share comments by you now?
No, we, just, just like we do with an agenda, anyone can share a comment.
But with the agenda, we send it to Jeff.
What do you prefer? What's your preference?
I think it'd probably be better for you to send it to me. Let me compile a single document with all of the feedback that we're evaluating or considering.
Yeah, thanks. Good question. Appreciate it.
I have one right now. So under implement socially-emotional learning programming aligned with our SEL framework, utilize a quarterly disciplined data review process at the secondary level to support school teams and behavioral efforts. Why, does that only apply to high school then, when you say secondary level, or middle school as well?
Middle school and high school.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, great. Now we'll get to the next one. Check. All right, written reports, we have three written reports. The monthly financial reports, they're standard and always available. The FOIA report and the board communications log, please run your eyes across those. I think they're always, one, interesting, and two, part of our governing responsibility. Next is reports from the board. Does the board or committee have any reports they want to talk about? Kind of combine those two things, but.
Just a question, because I don't remember, but the delegate assembly coming up for the school conference? Is that deadline passed? I don't have anything that I would want to propose. I, I just know that's like a multi-meeting.
It's a good point.
Multi-meeting discussion that we have.
I'll look into it. I don't, I don't.
You're talking about the deadline for actually submitting something that you might want to have considered?
No, I don't have anything I want to consider. I'm actually hoping we pass the deadlines. But I know, but I know the review of all the other possible resolutions.
I have a feeling we're probably past the submittal deadline, but in front of when you'll actually get the draft set of resolutions to consider as a, as a full board. That's usually into the fall.
We probably do need to appoint someone to, to that process, right? And if you have a, a interest, let me know. I'm guessing that line for volunteers is not going to be long, so if we have someone who has interest, I'm pretty much sure the job is yours, so let me know.
We, we are past the deadline. June 22nd was the deadline to submit.
That's, yeah, for us to submit something. It's, you know, it, I'll, I'll also encourage you to talk to Susan Booton, who has, who's done that work for a few years on our behalf, and great work she did. And I would just encourage you, if you have interest, connect with Susan.
Can we, can we hire her? To cast some votes for it?
That's up, that's up to her. Anyway, thank you for that.
I have one more thing. It doesn't belong here, but I realized that I misconstrued Erica L. for Erica E. when I was talking about the budget, and so, yeah, sorry about that.
Been there, it's okay. I think we've all been there.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right. That was committees and reports from board members. Items for future discussion, we have one topic for future discussion, which is the 2023-2024 budget public hearing. Are there any additional topics board members want to consider for future discussion? All right, we'll be able to talk about that next time, and this is a reoccurring item, so we don't have to answer tonight. Our next regular board meeting is on August 16th, 2023, 7 o'clock here at the School Service Center. We will be moving into a closed session, so board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption 5 LCS 120 slash 2, Part C, Part 11. Moved by Ms. Kowalski? I almost said Ms. Booton. Ms. Kowalski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jerpy. Ms. Hutchison, please call the roll.
Ms. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Blachner?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Yes, and so prior, we're going to adjourn to closed session. There's no action expected following this closed session, by the way.